I don't think so. Other than motions. I gotta fit everybody in here, Tom. We're not gonna be here till midnight. Offices. Well, we've actually opened up. The back room is our carryover.
Good evening, everybody. If you could kind of squeeze into the middle and open up some of the outside seats for, we have some standing guests in the back still. There's a few seats up front. I see five right here in the front two rows if anybody needs a seat. All right, it is 5:01 PM. We're gonna go ahead and call this public hearing to order. This is the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners' first public hearing for the fiscal year 2025-26 budget. Again, this is September 11th, 2025 at 5:01 PM. If I could have everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here this evening. At this time, we take a brief moment of silence. This is for individual prayer, reflection, or meditation. We take this time to honor and remember our first responders and the men and women in our military who keep us safe and protect our freedoms at home and abroad. Additionally, tonight, we also pause to remember the nearly 3,000 lives lost on September 11th, 2001, an event that continues to shape our nation 24 years later, reminding us both of our vulnerability and our resistance. We also acknowledge with sadness and tragic the assassination yesterday of Charlie Kirk, devout Christian and leading voice of the conservative youth movement. He dedicated his life to advancing open debate on college campuses across America and was a steadfast champion for free expression and conservative values. As we reflect, let us also recommit ourselves to the path of civil dialogue and respectful debate and reject violence as a means of silencing those with whom we disagree. Let us now take this moment of silence together. All right, thank you very much. It's a standing-room-only crowd, I see. There are a couple of, there's three seats up here in the front. If anybody has to have a seat, we'll move as quickly as we can to the, to the point that I think everybody is here for. Could I go with a roll call, please, for this meeting?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Pennington?
Here.
Chair Dance?
Here.
Commissioner Carney?
Here.
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. One addition to the agenda, item 3A, Attachment 5. Any additional emails that have been received after the 2:30 PM have been handed to the clerk and will be available upon request and will be posted post-meeting. A few announcements. Upcoming commission meetings. We have a workshop Monday, September 15th at 1:00 PM, and our next regular meeting is Monday, September 15th at 5:00 PM. So at this time, we'll open our public hearing. We have three items up for review as part of this. Item 3 is adopt special assessment roles for fiscal year 2025-26. The first, item 3A, is the unincorporated Barrier Island Beach Renourishment Special Assessment. This is a resolution levying the beach nourishment assessment at $0. Approve the interlocal agreements with the property appraiser and the tax collector and authorize staff to include the special assessment in the DR 408A Certificate to Non- Ad Valorem Assessment Role Form.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the resolution levying the beach nourishment assessment at $0. Approve the interlocal agreements with the property appraiser and tax collector and authorize staff to include this special assessment in the DR 408A Certificate to Non-Ad Valorem Assessment Role Form.
There's a motion by Commissioner Hanson.
I'll second the motion.
And a second by Commissioner Carney. At this time, we're going to have the, our county administrator, Ms. Petito, give a brief review of this item and of the beach work.
Well, thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody to our first public hearing on fiscal year 2026 county's budget. We're pleased to see such a strong turnout tonight as your participation is very important to us. We appreciate your engagement and we look forward to a constructive discussion this evening. I was asked to provide a brief overview of beach management in Flagler County, some of the steps that we've already taken, so it'll just be kind of a, an overview recap, cover some of the highlights and benefits that beach nourishment provides, and then talk a little bit about the MSBU and the unincorporated Barrier Islands. So I'll go ahead and get started. So, looking at the major steps that the county has taken, in 2023, Flagler County adopted the beach management plan. It was intended to restore and maintain healthy beaches and dune systems, which would include periodic beach nourishment. And then we had engaged with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to do a coastal storm risk management project. That ended up focusing on about 2.6-mile stretch in Flagler Beach between South 6th and South 28th Street. It built back a 10-foot dune, extended the beach seaward. Then we moved into, that was actually completed Labor Day, right before Labor Day of 2024. And then the county expanded to Reach 2 and some county-sponsored nourishment. We have plans currently underway to extend that nourishment north of the Army Corps project. We have permitting already underway. Hopefully, we should get that back relatively quickly. And then we'll be doing that likely sometime next year. We also have been working on funding mechanisms and local contributions. So that includes federal cost share as well as the initial through the Army Corps, and later renourishments would shift to like a 50-50 split. We have also secured numerous state funding grants. We've also leveraged our partnership with FDOT for some additional funding. In the current fiscal year, which is the one that we're in currently now, it ends the end of September. It began October of 2024. The Board of County Commission had allocated $5 million in local revenue as part of that program. And we have been working to coordinate permitting and environmental safeguards, which really was studying and mapping some of those protected areas, things that we've called habitat or hard bottom, especially along the 7.6 miles in Reach 3, where you see some of that natural seashore rock making it a little bit less suitable for nourishment, or at least more challenging for nourishment. And then we've also done some dune vegetative planting, sea oats, railroad vine, dune sunflowers. We've also incorporated some sand fencing as part of that to stabilize the dunes. So that's some of the major steps that we've undertaken. We have some additional work that we've done as well, which includes the creation of the MSBU district in the northern unincorporated 10 miles of the Barrier Island that was incorporated in December of last year. Currently, we're conducting an apportionment study on the MSBU. This is that formal analysis that determines how the costs of beach management are fairly distributed among the properties that benefit from it. We're also performing some dune protective measures from Vaughn Park North. We're gearing up to do some additional FEMA Category G work. We have secured perpetual easements with the Hammock Dunes Owners Association. We're currently working on similar easements with the Hammock Beach Resort and the Ocean Hammock. We also have agreements with all three of those entities to perform some dune restoration work. We've already begun and are in the process of performing that work. We're gonna be working with the other HOAs such as Sea Colony and Matanzas Shores for similar arrangements. And as we built the budget for fiscal year 26, we were able to set aside $8.2 million for beach management funding. And that's gonna be in the budget that you all will be looking at, hopefully approving tonight as the first step of the public hearing. And then, looking at the benefits of beach management, or at least what we expect to achieve, these are the benefits that properties would likely receive is storm protection, risk reduction, because we'll be building back wider, higher dunes. We'll be restoring beaches to act as buffers against waves, storm surge, and erosion, which should protect homes, utilities, roads, notably A1A, and any other public infrastructure. We've got six county parks on the Barrier Island. It'll also provide environmental and habitat benefits. Once you create that new dune with native vegetation, it'll help restore some of that coastal ecosystem, supports nesting areas for shorebirds and sea turtles. It also preserves some wildlife habitat. And then in some areas, you actually gain habitat because you're building it back bigger than it is today. Economic and recreational value. I think it goes without saying that, being a coastal community, this is a big part of who we are and our quality of life, but having a wide, healthy beach, it does attract more tourists, it increases recreational opportunities, it does boost local business. This is a long-term sustainability and a cost savings when we look at federal or state partners. They do require local matches. They're not gonna pay 100% of every project we have, but it does, you know, allow us to work with them. It does provide some financial relief at the local level and provide some stability for the county. By us scheduling predictable maintenance, which would likely be there every six years, 10 years, 11 years, the county would avoid any reactive, more expensive emergency fixes. And then when you talk about community resilience and quality of life, it's about protecting not only evacuation routes, but it also has a reduction in flood risk. It does preserve natural beauty, increasing the beachfront areas, more usable space for residents and for visitors that come into our community. Then we'll talk a little bit about the MSBU and the unincorporated beach area. That was created, like I said, December 2024. By law, we were required to provide notices to residents that live within that district. We did provide those notices that we are levying $0 for fiscal year 26. That MSBU would only cover a portion of beach management, which includes several different activities such as nourishment, facilities, and programs. I know there's been a lot of discussion about what does that mean? So, real brief, nourishment is about the direct work of placing sand on the beach. When we talk about facilities, it covers the physical infrastructure that supports the health of the beach, whether it's beach access points, it may be some parking areas, it's signage, it's the protective structures that you see there in that picture, such as dune fencing or plantings. Those are all considered beach facilities. And then when we talk about programs, that encompasses the ongoing services and initiatives that support long-term beach management. It may include monitoring programs, which include like erosion surveys, environmental studies. It may include dune restoration projects or public education efforts. And all of this requires coordination with some state and federal permitting and some grant programs. So, that's kind of what the MSBU was intended to be. I know there was some confusion when people received notices, even though this is something that we've been talking about, at least since I've been, as your county administrator, the last four years. I think at last count, I think I've had maybe 90 or so meetings, varying in public workshops and different things where we've talked about the beach. So this is not a new topic. And then I just leave it with this. If there's any questions, I don't know if the board has any questions or something that maybe you want me to clarify or cover based on any feedback that you guys have received.
Could you go back one slide, please?
Sure. Oh, I forgot to mention a couple things on that.
Yeah, especially the blended funding plan, please.
And I know that I had, I had received some emails direct from some residents. The MSBU is not intended to be an open checkbook. I think many people saw that we were levying zero and they wondered, okay, well, we're gonna say zero today and then maybe next week it's gonna be some other amount. By law, we have to provide notice to the people that are affected so that we can have discussions like this today. For next year, it is zero. It's not gonna change a month from now. It's not gonna change anytime before our next budget next year, because now would be the time to do that. The amount that would be apportioned or decided, it's, it's a scientific way that they look at it. They look at the data of what's required for the project, what's the cost of the project. But then they also have to look at, you know, tracing it back to what benefit is each property going to receive. So how much benefit do you get from flood protection? Or how much benefit do you get from the environmental or the recreational impact? So, when we look at it, they have to go through a, a study of apportionment where they determine proximity to your, your property and determine what amount of benefit you actually receive. Not every property receives the same benefit. So that is a process we have to go through in order to actually levy the assessment. If it is used in the future and we come up with a dollar amount that we plan to levy, just like you did this year, you would receive another notice next year. And in that notice, it'll tell you for your specific property how much you're being levied. And it'll also give you the maximum cap that we could levy. So it's not ever gonna be an open-ended checkbook. You'll know how much you're being asked to pay, and you'll also be told how much that cap is gonna be. And then when you...
All right, all right. Everybody, please.
When you look at the MSBU funding, it has always been part of a blended beach management funding plan. Even when we've done town halls over the last two years, when we went out, we showed a graph that had grants, whether it's federal and state partnership grants. It talked about a portion of, of current half-cent sales tax, even future. When we talked to some folks, when we were looking at different options, we talked about having a dedicated millage of general fund or general ad valorem. And then we talked about having an MSBU. We talked about doing an MSBU county-wide. We've talked about doing an MSBU only in the unincorporated. The reason that we moved forward with just the unincorporated area is because that's the only area that we have jurisdiction over. In order for a city, cities are...
Please, everybody, enough.
We do not have legal jurisdiction over a city because cities were created. They have their own charter, they have their own rules. Our rules don't necessarily apply. So within the city limits of, say, Flagler Beach, Flagler Beach would have to allow the county to come in, and that arrangement would be done through an interlocal agreement. That is something we still have yet to work out with the other coastal communities. We only have jurisdiction in the unincorporated because we are the only form of government in the unincorporated areas. So we started with the unincorporated area. The cost levied in the unincorporated area would only be for the beach work or beach restoration work done in the unincorporated. So it's not taking the cost of beach management in Flagler Beach and Beverly Beach or Marineland and then saying, okay, unincorporated, you're the only ones paying for it. Nobody else on the Barrier Island is paying for it. When they go through that apportionment, they look at the area that the work is gonna be done, just the limits of that section, and they apportion that amount only to the parcels that are within that section. So it'll never be that you're paying for something in Flagler Beach or Beverly Beach or that they're paying for yours. Everybody within the jurisdictional boundaries of incorporation or unincorporated would be what they pay for. So I think there's a lot of confusion out there where people are assuming that the entire beach management program would be on the backs of only those in the unincorporated, and that is not true. It has always been looked at as a blended funding plan that includes all of these things. So, I don't know if that was what was missing, but any other questions by the board, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. I'm gonna remind everybody of the very first thing we opened with, which was during the moment of silence where we spoke about civil dialogue and respectful debate, and I expect all of us to adhere to that this evening. That includes not shouting out, that includes not interrupting anybody, okay? That's, that's what I expect all of us to follow, to get through this evening. I do have one other request. We are over capacity. In order to comply with the fire marshal, the last few people that entered the room, if I could have you leave, we need 30 people to exit the room. But the deputy Bagwell is going to...
Everybody who is standing is leaving until we have a count of 30 out of the other room. They're setting up a TV, you're trying to, so you can hear and see what's going on.
But I'll need a head count of 30 outside the building, outside this room, excuse me, in order to continue. The room can only hold so many. So we'll need some volunteers to go outside as they set up an additional TV. If there's some staff in here that may not be necessary for the public hearing, our finance team stays. All clear, deputy? All right, thank you very much. My apologies. They're working to get some additional technology out there for the people that are in the hallway. At this time, we are going to open up for public comment. Each commenter will be allowed three minutes. If you, to avoid repetition of some of the same items, if, if somebody has already stated the comments that you're going to state, it's, you can come up and briefly just state that, you know, without going for the full three minutes. We, we have a lot of people here, so in order to get everybody in and, and hear all public comments, you can make it quick by coming to the front and standing in line so that we don't wait for you to get to the podium. So, at this time, we'll open it up, the floor for public comment.
Ms. Chair, is there gonna be a limit on the time?
They have three minutes each, but there's no limit on time.
Okay.
Go ahead. Just state your name for the record.
My name is Mike Dunkle. I live in the north gate of Hammock Dunes.
Yes, sir.
First of all, thank you for hosting us all. We're all, pretty much all your neighbors, I recognize some of you, are kind of suffering from a little concern here. I think you're all aware of those concerns. The ideology behind, "I will increase the value of my property by funding the restoration of the beach, thereby increasing the assessed value of my property, thereby increasing the homeowner's insurance and the tax basis for my property," doesn't follow logic and reason very well. And the restoration process, as an engineer of longstanding, the restoration process is a Band-Aid. It works fine for impact damage. It does not work fine for erosive damage. Anybody who would question that, I spent every 30 minutes during the last hurricane on the beach taking the video. There needs to be some reinforcement within the sand berm itself to capture the sand as it's going out to the ocean and to protect the impact damage. CDD has been debt-free since 2014, when they paid off a $40 million bond. CDD used to have a, a process whereby those of us that live on the Barrier Island get a break on the tax rate, a break on the toll rate. The people who didn't paid more. They have since changed that policy, and now anyone who wants to free up a credit card with a 10, 20... card with a $10, $20 limit gets the low-cost deal of going over the bridge. And the problem with this taxation assessment that you folks are discussing is this is a community. All of Flagler is a community. We're funding schools. I don't have any kids in school. Where does this end? I would expect everybody to take advantage of the beach and welcome them to do it. And I would also suggest to whoever mentioned increased tourism. For those of us that have been stuck on the bridge for 40 minutes trying to get back home, that's another kind of foolish argument for all of us. We're funding the bridge now. My wife and I go back and forth over the damn thing, it seems like, 10 times a day. So let's do this. Let's give the hammock residents, the people that are paying the utilities in the hammock, the unincorporated, give them the break and rescind all this free passes to everybody else and let them pay the $3 toll and let the $3 poll subsidize the renourishment of the beach.
Next speaker. Well, we're going to be a long night if we applaud for every comment, so just- Next speaker, please.
Oh. Go ahead. All right. I'm Dennis Clark. You know me. I live at 5784 North Ocean Shore Boulevard. I've been here before, but usually on other issues. It may surprise you that I'm actually okay with the MSBU, as long as it's reasonable and constrained. What I have not heard, what I don't understand, is how we plan to pay for the majority portion of the beach management cost. And I have to show you the pie graphs. I guess I'll hold them up because I can't get the overhead. But we had, back in February and even into June, we had $72 million. Sorry. Back in February and June, we had $72 million to do, every six years, to do the beach maintenance. 12% of that was coming out of the MSBU. $56 million or almost 80% was supposed to come out of the half-cent sales tax. But we don't have a half-cent sales tax. We don't have anything. So there's 80% of that beach renourishment that has no, that has no funding. So recently, numbers have changed to indicate just the north 10 miles. I just got these numbers, and it looks like $49 million for the north 10, 10-plus miles. And so now we're paying twice the percentage, 24%, is supposed to come out of the MSBU, $12 million. And the funding source for half of it is still unknown. So I believe that certain facts need to be established. Will you commit to maintaining the beaches as stated in your beach management plan, which I have here somewhere? If so, will the whole 18, will it be just the whole 18 miles or just the 10-plus miles? If the half-cent sales tax is still available, is the half-cent sales tax still available for vote by commissioners? Some say that it has already been voted down. Can the county determine how much of the sales tax is allocated to the beaches and set the duration? And if the sales tax is rejected by your vote or referendum, what is the alternative? You need, what's the backup plan? Add valorem to the entire county? And when will it be implemented? And the last thing is, how do we keep the MSBU from becoming a blank check? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Dr. Lynn Bravo-Rosewater from the Hammock. I'm sad to say that both for you commissioners, oh, you can't hear me, both for the commissioners and the executive staff of Flagler County, I feel like you failed to do your job. You are years late to the game of renourishment. Everybody would come in and say, oh, this was a special storm. This was a special storm. This is what we were having. So you're late to the game, and then you have no idea how you're going to pay the enormous cost. And the fact is, you can't just lay that on one group of people to say, oh, yes, we're going to be $12 million sure, so we have to raise that money over six years because that's, we've got to do it over again. And the other thing is the lack of information that you have given us. You came high, well, when they talked about the MSBU, they talked about the MSTU. And what was said to us was, everybody's going to pay the MSBU, and you'll pay that and you'll also pay the MSTU. Now we find out that Flagler County has no authority to do an ad valorem tax for anyone except us. Never told us that. Spent a long time discussing, this is how we're going to solve it, and it, I mean, that's very frustrating. The other thing is that you already have permission from the state for another one half-cent tax raise because when the small communities and counties, and Flagler is a small county, went to the government, Florida, and said, look, we're really having trouble meeting our budgets, you know, we have so much going on, can you help us? Can we raise the tax? And they said, you could raise the tax 1%, 1%. So Flagler raised it 1/2%. They still have 1/2% that's already agreed upon, already done, that we can use. And when you say, let's ask the people, let's do a referendum, oh, yeah, you want to pay more taxes? That's going to be a dilly of a referendum because people are going to say, no. And that's why I think we haven't done your job because your job is to give out the right information, is to keep people notified, and you haven't done it. You haven't done it, and that's very unfair to all of us who are working very hard to take care of this beautiful place that we live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Evening.
My name is Art Dungan. I live at 13 Smiling Fish Lane in Beach Haven, which is a community about eight tenths of a mile south of Marineland, west of A1A. I wish to address the following in the proposed resolution. First, inequities in the burdening only Barrier Island residents for the full cost of the renourishment. Inequities in having all the island residents sharing equally in the cost. And inequities in charging residents the same amount regardless of the value of their property, except for homes near the beach that benefits of the renourishment program are not specific to island residents. Marineland Beach is packed with visitors every summer weekend, and the vast majority of these people are not island residents. This is just one example of benefits by non-island residents. I think it's the same is true in the other, other beaches, but I've not been privileged to go there. Why should county, why should island residents pay for these, for benefits that the whole county benefits from? Next, to the extent that the island residents are burdened with appropriate renourishment costs, they should not be based on all residents paying the same amount. Residents who live beachside or close to the beach would get far more benefits than those who live further away. The island needs to be set up in zones, at least three or four, to designate which properties receive the most benefits and which receive none. Where I live in Beach Haven, the houses are built two feet above the ground. I don't believe any renourishment program will change the flooding aspects of Beach Haven residents. In a quick search of Flagler County property values, I found a property with a building value in excess of $4 million right at beachside. I also found another property with, with a quarter, a quarter a mile from the beach with a building value of less than $16,000. Having a non-ad valorem tax would require these two properties paying the same amount of renourishment fee. How can you all feel that that's reasonable? In summary, I think the county needs to ensure that all residents are paying the same amount for such costs that clearly show benefits exclusive to the island residents. It should ensure that all, all exclusive benefits are equitably distributed among island residents. Island residents who receive no benefits should pay no tax. The remainder of the cost should be paid by the county as large.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker, please. It might be. Is it working, Carlos? Go ahead and position it for us. Yeah, you need to move it down. It's not up there.
Was it in the right place? Did for a minute.
I don't know about the main menu sitting there.
We got it.
Okay. First, I want to thank the commission. My name's Ed White, 27 Ocean Street, live in the Hammock. I'm also a board member of the Hammock Community Association, but I'm talking-
Thank you.
-as a citizen today. Want to thank this board and the county staff for finally getting us a beach management plan. Heidi and staff, Greg Hanson on the board's behalf, and the rest of the board worked very hard to get us where we are. Also, thanks to this board for getting funding for 2026. That's very important. However, this funding is only for one year, and we need a funding plan that goes on year after year after year. I hate to think you go through this every year. I don't think you want to. We need a long-range funding plan. Want to back up for a minute and talk about why the beach is important. There's lots of reasons, and a lot of people will cover those reasons, but I want to focus on one. In 2024, tourism brought in just under $900 million of economic impact to Flagler County. That's not just for the beach people. That's for the entire county. The entire county counts on that economic impact and the taxes on it. If the beach goes away, tourism will go away. If tourism goes away, $900 million goes away. If $900 million, well, can you imagine if that goes away? What's going to happen? One of two things. Either you're going to have to raise other taxes or our quality of life in Flagler County is going to go way down. So obviously, we're going to fund this because we're not going to let that happen, right? I know you're not going to. Question is, how are we going to fund it? The MSBU, in my opinion, is not a good approach. It's only paid by 5% of the citizens in the county, whereas the entire county benefits. Only property owners pay. What about renters? What about tourists? It's painful. It's going to have a lot of, the fee's going to be a large fee if you don't include some other major funding mechanism. What's a better approach? A major funding mechanism of a half-cent sales tax. It's fair. All county citizens will help to pay on the biggest asset we have in Flagler County, that we all have in Flagler County. It's fairly painless. One-half a cent on a dollar. That means if you go out and spend $100 on dinner, you're going to pay 50 cents extra tax. If you go buy a new car or a new boat, it's only $25.
Got to cut you off.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you very much. The slides were a great idea. Your slides, slides were a great idea to go with your talk. State your name, please.
Joel Modis, and my address is 2 San Felipe Way. We live a couple miles south of the Marineland Park, so I don't, I'm pretty sure I'm in the district you guys were talking about, but since there wasn't a map, I really don't know for sure. But anyway, I just want to come to you. I moved here about three years ago. I'm a veteran who's disabled. I have a hearing disability. I'm on a fixed income, and we've been hit with increased flood insurances the last few years, and any more increase, I might have to just, you know, I would consider selling my house if this tax goes through for us residents if it's too high. So that's, I would just, I want you to consider the, I mean, I'm not, I mean, there's a lot of wealthy people on the island. God bless them. I'm just getting by and just think of the people on fixed incomes in the district. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Evening.
Hi. My name is Patrice Beach. I live at 12 Rollins Drive. I've been a resident in Marineland Acres for 25 years. Marineland Acres was just assessed, a special assessment for the drainage and the Bay Park, okay? I've been to many county commission meetings in regards to that. I feel that all of Flagler County should contribute to this, this special assessment. I understand that we do need to have the restoration of the beaches and keep them in, in good standing and good, you know, but it shouldn't be a burden for all of us that live on the Barrier Island. We have already been taxed for a park and drainage, okay, that took 15 years to, to come to fruition, okay? Sorry, I'm a little nervous.
That's fine.
I just, it's, we are, we're all not rich. We are all working people, and I love the idea that the gentleman had, you know, a sales tax. That would be amazing. But I think it should be shared amongst all residents within Flagler County because they all go to the beach. It's not just benefiting me. So that's just my point.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Evening. Good eve, oh, start us over.
Okay. I'm Barbara Batell. I live at 36 Beachside Drive, which is just south of Marineland. You can, five-minute walk. I've lived at that property for 40 years. I've never been flooded by a dune washover or the Metanasis River. I live on the river. But the folks at the other end of my street, at the east end of the street, have been impacted by breaking of the dunes and flooding. So I'm willing to pay my share. I'm okay with the special assessment as long as it's reasonable, equitable, and taxed. To make it equitable, I strongly encourage you to pass the half-cent sale tax because, as has been said before, everybody in Flagler County benefits from the high quality of our beaches, right? As was mentioned, the Marineland parking lot on the weekend is overflowing, and it's not from folks who live down the street. If the assessment goes too high, we will be priced out of our homes. On Beachside Drive was developed in the late '70s, and most of the houses were built during the early '80s. And they're not mega mansions. They're working people, small houses, and if the assessment goes too high, we will be priced out and will have to leave. I don't think you want that. So I, I urge you to pass the half-cent sales tax for the beach renourishment. That would be equitable, and it would make the special assessment for those on, who live on the Barrier Island reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jane Jancy Lued.
Good evening.
I am-
I am here to speak on the whole kit and caboodle. First of all, we have a new county attorney, Michael Rodriguez, who was hired at a salary of $195,000.
You're going to speak to the issue, Ms. Yud.
The issue is, why was all this prepared by Sean Moylan as to form? We have a new county attorney. Everything should be prepared as far as content, not just form. You can go to Staples and buy forms. All this was prepared by Sean Moylan, the same Sean Moylan who said there was no problem with the dump across the street that was in violation of D E P.
Ms. Yud, please.
Okay, yes, please. All right. You have here issues that are just outrageous. You don't, your budget does not break down the salaries in the different departments. For instance, in your legal.
Ms. Yud, this is the special assessment. This is.
This is, this is, okay. The special assessment also includes garbage.
No, we aren't to that point yet. This is just the beach special assessment topic.
Oh, I apologize profusely. I thought it was one public hearing for everything.
We'll have a separate public comment section for the rest of the special assessments.
I do apologize on that. I agree with the half-cent sales tax. I think it's beneficial for us to pay that to save the beach.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Barbara Royer. I'm at Hammock Beach Estates, 18 Cottonwood Trail. Mr. Hanson has been over there. I want you to look at the members of this group here. How many are?
You have to speak into the microphone.
Fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety-year-olds. Some people are on fixed income. Some people are on disability. I can't get to the beach. I don't live on the beach. Thirty years ago, Palm Coast was a pleasant place to live, and now you have ruined it. And now you want to assess people that can't use the beach, don't live on the beach? That is not fair. It is absolutely unconscionable that you think this way, all of you members here. I don't understand this. I really don't. And I don't usually speak, but I'm speaking behalf of my neighbors on Hammock Beach Estates, and Hanson knows who they are. Sarah cannot be here. I'm here, speaking on their behalf. I have people, I bring Meals on Wheels. These people cannot afford assessments. They've been there, and my parents built that house in 1994, and this was a great place to live, and I'm sorry to say, it's bad. And you want to put up two more Ritz-Carlton for the resort? That's more traffic on the beach. Everybody uses our beach. All the tourists come to there. We know on Saturday that Publix is packed because of the resort. I don't have that kind of money. She doesn't have that kind of money, Michelle's mother. Neither do my neighbors that live right across the street for the last 30 years. What are you thinking about? I don't know how much money you're expecting people to pay, but even $2,000 is too much for some people that are on disability. We have veterans over there. We have people, like I said, that are Meals on Wheels. I don't understand it. If you got to do anything for beach nourishment, do the half-cent, half-tax cent, whatever you call it. But I'll tell you one thing. Look at Katrina. I don't know how much damn sand you're going to pay on that beach and how much money you're going to get from people. It's going to be washed away. You know it. I know it. You cannot stop Mother Nature. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, commissioners. Thank you for your time.
Evening.
Hi, my name is Robert Emadeo. I live on 39 Ocean Street with my wife Sandy.
Can you come a little closer to the mic?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm opposed to the special assessment, but I am for restoration of the dunes. It's not a private beach. It's a public beach. The entire county should pay for it, in my opinion. $5.7 million was budgeted for Flagler County Parks and Rec in 2025. Did just the neighbors of those parks pay for it, or did the whole county pay for that? When those parks were built, did the entire county pay for that, or did just those people that have boughted the parks pay for that? I think the taxpayers paid for it. Even Flagler Beach Restoration, Flagler County contributed some money towards that, which means I contributed some money towards that with my tax dollars. And I think the entire county should be paying for this, not just us. Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Rob Drowski, 3 Laurel Lane. I came here earlier in the spring, and I'm not quite the eloquent speaker my wife is, but we've been trying to speak on this topic for a while with our Protect Flagler Beaches initiative. I want to talk a little bit about just some numbers I don't think people are necessarily aware of and how it relates to the funding mechanism. So I don't have the exact, I would welcome Ms. Petito to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the Barrier Island property tax dollar-wise is a net exporter in supporting the remainder of the county, something to the effect of 20% of the property taxes collected come from the Barrier Island, yet only something around 10% of the population of the counties on the Barrier Island. It's probably a rough number, it's not quite right, but I believe I heard that at one of the workshops that we were in previously. That said, I know I brought this up earlier in the spring as well. So in the last 10 years, if you examine the Flagler County budgets, our property taxes collected in the county have increased by about 130%. Populations only increased by about 33% or so. Even accounting for inflation, that's a gap of about $30 million extra the county is collecting. So I don't know where those funds are going. I don't know what is the cause of this gap that we have and why we can't just fund the beach management plan from those dollars. But I do think it's important just for this board to be very transparent, open, and honest about things. So again, if the answer is, we're getting less money from the state, let's be honest about that. I also believe one of the reasons we are where we are is because we haven't diversified our tax base in the county. We haven't brought in a lot of businesses. We've kept growing with all these additional homes and developments that have been coming in, but we haven't attracted the businesses. I know this board and others within Palm Coast and others are trying to do a better job of that now, but I think it's important just to level set and say, hey, we haven't done a good job of this up until this point, so this is why we are where we are. I think if we're honest and you say that, people will have more of an appetite to have that half-cent sales tax across the county because we'll understand, hey, we got where we are. It's not necessarily this group's fault, but this is what we got to do to actually take care of the beaches now going forward, and that can be our funding mechanism at least for the moment. That said, sans that, I don't see an appetite from the cities of Palm Coast, Pinellas, any of those areas to really contribute to this vote that'll go on in November for the half sales tax, I feel like is a fait accompli. It's going to go down. So to me, unfortunately, it comes down to it, if we can't get the support and the funding really falls on the Barrier Island, maybe the Barrier Island needs to separate. Maybe we need to have a conversation with our legislatures and go, maybe we should group up with St. John's County or form our own county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie Buffington, 9 Ocean Dune Circle. I live on the beach, and I'm happy that we are going to have some beach maintenance. The funding is a difficult problem to solve. I'm okay with apportionment. If it's fair, it has to be equitable. I'm from Pinellas County originally, actually Hillsborough County, born and raised. I lived there for over 25 years before I moved here seven years ago. They have a beach maintenance plan, and it's funded by the half-cent sales tax. It is, nobody on the island is singled out with a separate tax bill for beach maintenance, and it covers it all. There's a lot of tourism there. We got to capture that revenue. But that's not my biggest concern. My biggest concern is the overbroad language of the MSBU. Yes, it should cover services, nourishment services, sand placement only. We should not be paying solely on the island, that is. It should be spread around all of the citizens and tourists for parking, for signage, for fencing. This is a public park. Those parks are public. I don't use them. A lot of island residents don't use them. That's for people that come to the island to use the beach. It shouldn't include programs and initiatives and education. We should not be burdened with solely sourcing that extra. That needs to be spread. Those two things need to be spread equitably among all citizens and visitors. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Joseph Bonch. I reside at 11 Sand Piper Lane in Ocean Hammock. While I am supporter of the beach renourishment program, I am vehemently opposed to a misuse of the special assessment as proposed. I've looked all around the state of Florida. I have not found a single example where another municipality used an assessment to fund an ongoing beach renourishment program. The closest I could get to it, and Flagler Beach was one of them, was they used it to fund beach wall construction after the 2018 hurricane. So Pinellas County this year is funding $127 million. There's no special assessments. It's paid for out of the general funds. Vero Beach, Fernandina Beach Amelia Island, Jacksonville Beach, all of, St. John's up in Jacksonville, all of these counties found a way to fund it with a combination of federal funds, Corps of Engineer dollars, state grants, local taxes, and if all else fails, they went the hotel room tax path. That's what they did near Tampa, Hillsborough, Pinellas. So go to section, statute, Florida statute 170-1. So the county administrator delineated benefits, and if you go into 170-1, "Special Assessments may be levied only, for the purpose enumerated in this section, shall be levied only on benefited real property at a rate assessed on the special benefit accruing to such property." They have to derive special benefits. If you went back to the three or four slides that the county administrator Petito covered, 90% of those are general public benefits. They're not special. They're not exclusive. They're not limited. These feet haven't been in the beach water in six years. I live in Ocean Hammock, but I'm 1,000 feet from the beach. So we're already, A, paying higher taxes. We're already, B, paying higher insurance, and if this doesn't get socialized at the county level, this ill-designed application of special assessments, of which I have found none elsewhere in the state, will deservedly get a legal challenge. So with that, we've got 37 seconds left. So the other thing to note is, in 2018, after that hurricane, the county took action to legally make all beach property publicly accessible. So because they had issues getting the work done at that time, you said, nope, if you're going to try to treat this as private beach, it's not going to allow. So go back and look at chapter, it's either 7-1 or 70-1, but you passed that law to further codify the argument that this is common beach property and to be and is enjoyed by all and shouldn't be burdened on these people alone.
Thank you for your time. I want to take a little special privilege here is chair to try to go back. We have no time limits on here, but I do want to address some of the different comments that tend to be repeated, and I just want to address those for the benefit of the speakers that are still in line. And for the gentleman that was just up, every other county that you mentioned is a high tourism county. They are far exceed, excuse me. Hold on. We're going to do this civilly. They are highly, highly, high tourism counties where they are able to use a lot more money allocated to tourism than Flagler County is able to. So we have to look at alternate ways of funding this as well. Yes, ma'am.
So could you give our constituents an idea of what, so specifically, in Flagler County, our total budget for tourism revenue is $4 million. St. John's is $27 million, and Daytona Beach is well, or I'm sorry, Volusia County is well over $40 million. We don't, I think what the chair is saying is, also by statute, we have a limitation on how much of that revenue can be dedicated to the beach. So not only do we have a small pot, we only have a five cents of that can be spent on the beach. There are statutes within the state of Florida Tourism that tells us how we have to spend it. We don't just come up with a number every year, and in the current plan that Mrs. Petito, when she talked about the blended plan, we not only took from one pot, which we're allowed to do, we took from a second pot, which will eliminate capital projects all over the county. So we took the maximum maximum. So the blended plan does include tourism. It's just not enough. And unless the new hotel in Flagler Beach generates another $4 million, we, our pot is too small in Flagler County. So I think.
Thank you.
That was the idea.
And real briefly, just, I think tourism was mentioned a few different times, and we are maxing out the amount of money from tourism right now that we can utilize for that purpose. There was a discussion about language within the MSBU language. Just because the language is in there doesn't mean that's being solely used, that the MSBU is being solely used for that. It just allows us to use it as part of the overall blended funding formula. It's in there, so we can use it for those, but not solely. The MSBU is not solely funding those functions. Okay? It's part of the overall funding distribution. There's been a lot of exaggerations of numbers, and I don't know where they've come from. The only thing that's been publicized is the original MSBU numbers of 160 during the early establishment of our funding plan and our different town halls. So I've seen nothing that we're trying to fund the entire fund, beach nourishment program with the MSBU. It is part of a multifaceted, somebody, gentleman, mentioned all the different federal funds. We're maximizing every available funding formula we can get from the state, from the federal government. There's been a couple of press releases just recently of additional releases of funding that have come from the federal government. I think the one thing I'll have administration answer is, how can it be, how can this be checked to avoid being an open deck, an open check? And the one part is through the public participation process through this. We just can't allocate funds without a structured public process where we notify you. And there was a, the legal challenge part is part of the engineering study that we're going through now. Our assessment will be based on an engineering study, which is what allows us to be defensible in court. It's that study that will back up the assessments so that it could be challenged. Anybody can challenge it, but that allows us and gives us a professional engineering certification to back up the assessment and the benefits to the island, Barrier Island residents. And somebody mentioned about the waves breaking on the dunes. It's a combination of dune nourishment, dune reinforcement in addition to the renourishment portion. The whole idea of the beach renourishment is to push the wave action a few hundred yards out into the, away from the dune. So this whole process with multiple dune nourishments pushes the wave action off of the dune, allows the dune to reestablish itself and protects the dune and that whole ecosystem. So that is the, the idea of all of this is to avoid the wave action breaking on the dunes themselves. It's to push that action farther out into the ocean, and then the beaches start doing their natural renourishment all over again. Did I miss anything, Ms. Petito, that you came across?
The only other thing that I would say is that it's not uncommon for coastal communities to use MSBUs or MSTUs. Just looking at a list that our coastal engineer sent me, Charlotte County uses both MSBU and MSTU in Manassota Key. Lee County uses an MSTU in Sanibel Island. Collier County MSTU in Marco Island. Monroe County, Florida Keys, MSBU. Pinellas County, MSBU at Pass Agrill Beach. Volusia County uses an MSTU in Daytona Beach shores. Palm Beach County uses an MSTU in Jupiter Island. Brevard County uses an MSTU in Cocoa Beach. Indian River uses an MSBU in Orchid Island Beach. Martin County uses an MSBU in Hope Sound, and Sarasota County also uses an MSBU in Manassota Key. So this is not a new concept. I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware of that. Thank you.
Is there any other commissioner that wanted to address any of the comments that they've heard? Commissioner Hanson?
Oh, just to make sure it's clear that we don't, no matter what happens here.
Oh, just to make sure it's, it's clear that we don't, no matter what happens here, or how we figure out to rack it up next year, is the MSBU will not, is not intended to pay for the whole thing. It's just a small portion. And we're working on the, the fairness of the, the B, the benefit. We're working on the fairness of that now. And, and one of the rackups that we're working with right now has the maximum. Maximum MSBU would be $450 a year, and that would be only for homes that are actually on the beach. Every other home would be much less than that, much less as you move west across the deal.
I would caution on giving out numbers until we have our study.
Well, we're working on it. We're, we're working on that now. We're working on the study. These are just some of the numbers that we're working with.
Yeah, I would
Well, I didn't see any of those numbers. So I, one other common thing that keeps coming up, I believe, is about all of Flagler County. And Mrs. Petito started in one, in one of her points, that we are one jurisdiction, one element of a larger. We cannot set laws even on the half cent sales tax. We cannot act on behalf of any other municipality. They either come to us as the county and ask us to help, or we enter, enter, enter local agreement with them. We can't go to their citizens and ask them these questions or present these things. They have to do that on their own. It's, it's the law. It, we don't have anything, we are a county, we have unincorporated county folks and, and parks and all kinds, it's, it's how all the counties work. But flat, we cannot impose on Flagler Beach an MSBU. They need to do it themselves. So we are, and we started all this two years ago, working on how to protect the Barrier Island and the unincorporated area. That's where we have focused and that's basically where we are today. But we can't, we, we can't go to, even with the half cent sales tax, the law gives every municipality their portion and the county gets less than Palm Coast. So we're working on all of that, but we, we have rules that we have to follow. It's not just one big pot of money. And that's what led us to the blended plan that we presented actually in September, September what, 5th?
Third.
Third?
Third.
The presented, the blended plan was presented in June before we even started this whole process. So it's there, it's out there.
Okay. So with that, just wanted to clarify a few of them for anybody that was still in the queue that was coming up, just to hopefully clarify some of those points. So Mr., your name, sir?
Good evening. It's Ron Boyce, Ocean Hammock.
Thank you, Ron.
31 Ocean Oaks Lane. I wish you had the meeting on another day other than September 11th. Not too happy about being here. But you can call for a vote for the half cent sales tax tonight. You can call for a vote and you can call a second and you can vote on it. And that's what I'm looking for tonight.
Well, actually our rules prevent us from doing that without first putting it on an agenda, but we would have to, by consensus, move it to another agenda.
Well, I'd like to see that done. If you can't do it tonight, I'd like to see it done the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that your comment?
That's the reason why I'm speaking up here, because I believe your staff really worked really hard. And that was turned down by this board not too long ago. Now, I watch these meetings every month from my own home, and I came down here tonight to ask you to rethink, rethink about it and put it up for another vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Don Albertson from the Tansas Shores, represent 835 homes. The fellow before me had an excellent point that the only fair way to come up with this money is a half in sales tax. Everybody uses that beach. It is not private. It, it should not be paid by the people, including myself, that live on the ocean. It should be paid for everybody. Everybody has access to it. And I think the only fair way is to tax everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Bernadette Boyd. I live at the Tansas Shores, also where Don lives. There's a lot of things that I wanted to say have already been said, but for one thing, in Florida, there's generally no state mandated annual limit on the amount a county can charge for a special assessment. Instead, the restrictions on special assessments differ from the limits on property value increases for ad valorem taxes, which are capped by the SAVR Homes Program. I also found somewhere else that the special assessments are only supposed to last a couple years, not a lifetime. So I feel that this is a lifetime project that, and I, some other way, somehow, to me legally, a special assessment is an absolute no-go. And I also feel like Don, the beaches are not privately owned, they are owned and enjoyed by everybody. And we see all the people coming over. You can't even find a parking spot in Flagler Beach because people come and they're enjoying. So just for a few, and I understand right now it's just the unincorporated place. However, maybe before this meeting happened, we should know what Flagler Beach is going to do, what Marineland is going to do, and what Beverly Beach is going to do. And this way we'll have a more fair idea. Because right now, my friends live at Surfside Estate and they're like, ha, ha, you got it, we don't. And it's not fair to a few group of us people. So I am recommending that. Also, I read in the Observer that in October, they were going to come and give you, I guess, the, you know, what it's going to cost to do the beach, an engineering company. So until you know that too, that's another red flag. Until you really know that dollar and cents wise, right now, we're still up in the air. So that's basically my comment. Please figure out the other municipalities out there and exactly what this is going to cost. And it's got to be, and get, get ahold of Palm Coast, get ahold of the other places and get together with them and say, look, this is all our beaches. They, they need to contribute. There's a lot of homes in Palm Coast. There's a lot of taxpayers there. So is my time up? I can sing a show tune. All right, now, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before, before you go, I just do want to remind the last speaker that there's no assessment. We're not charging anything this year. That's giving us time. That's, hold on, hold on, hold on a second. Hold on a second. That is giving us time to work with the other municipal municipalities like she addressed. The whole idea is the mechanism is in place, but we're not charging anything this year. And that will allow us to go through all those other variations that were mentioned and be able to investigate those other options. And it is an annual, the MSBU is annually renewed. It is not a lifetime, it is an annual renewal. Go ahead, next speaker, please.
Barbara Brody, Island Estates. One of the things I want to mention, I've mentioned this at another meeting, your symbol is the beach. All of Flagler County, all of Flagler County should be paying this. Right now, one of the things I'm most disappointed is you've come up with a tax that none of the commissioners are going to be paying. None of you live in the unincorporated area. I also feel that we're subsidizing, the Barrier Island is subsidizing a few oceanfront homes. In most places, the oceanfront homes pay the bulk of the sand. Another thing is, I feel like you're motivating us to go look at another, like maybe joining St. John's County. They have a lower tax rate. I know they're be more than willing to take our tax base. And we could arrange for some continue, as long as we're continuous, we could do something like that. It would take a lot of effort, but we could. So one of the things, like Ponte Vedra does a graduated tax. I have a question. Living on Island Estates, I technically don't live in the Barrier Island, but we've paid a lot of money for this sand already. We live, Island Estates is an island located in the Barrier Island, in the intercoastal. I have a question about, we've already paid before this year about $5,000 a person towards sand. This year, our Hammock Dunes Board, without surveying the members, gave the county 2.2 million more in sand, representing their 1,187 members. Then they just voted to, and I, I thought this had to go through a community vote, so I'm very confused. They just committed to $570,000 annually. So that's, you know, quite a bit of money from the Hammock. So we're going to get hit with an MSBU also with, when we've already committed $570,000 a year. Will this be taken into account when you're doing these things? You know, it's, we just don't feel it's fair. I mean, the Hammock pays a huge percentage of the county's taxes and we don't pull, we don't pull for those resources as much, and that's it.
Thank you. Evening.
Good evening. James Foster, Hammock Beach. First, I'd just like to thank the city council for, or not city, the council for doing all the work they do. I know it can't be easy. My father was involved with politics for a long time. He had a lot of late nights and a lot of arguments, so.
Speak into the mic a little bit more.
Late nights and a lot of arguments, so I appreciate the time. I want to, I want to talk, I want to deliver essentially three messages tonight. The first is, when you see 80 to 100 people in the room tonight, it's not 80 to 100 people that oppose this. There's, was a petition that I started in December of 2024 when they were voting on the MSBU. And, and that circulated. We have 1,700 signatures. Now, I scrubbed that down to 1,100 signatures that are actually in Flagler County. So we're 1,100 strong, not 80 to 100, who firmly oppose this. That's the first point I'd like to make. I did email that to the assessment address today. So I hope that you've gotten it. I'm not sure if you're aware of it. Second point, second point, I've been a corporate controller for Fortune 200, Fortune 500, private equity owned companies, and I've learned how to follow the cash, right? Cash flow, cash flow, cash flow. As I see it, the root cause of this problem is that 30, 35 years ago, this council began misappropriating the funds. I moved to a two-bedroom, two-bath house last year. I paid $10,400 in taxes. That's three to 300 to 400% more than any two, two-bedroom, two-bath house that's not on the, on the island, not in this district. So clearly, I'm already paying three to four times more in taxes. 30, 35 years ago, someone should have had the foresight to start reserving money. So the houses were selling for more, the taxes were higher because the homes are assessed higher. At that point in time, there should have been a reserve set aside. So I'm asking you now to be more proactive and set that money aside. Instead of putting a reserve, the money was misappropriated and used to keep, either misappropriated for pet projects or used to keep other, the rest of the county's taxes down. And I heard a number earlier, that's what I thought, probably back of the envelope, about 20% of our taxes are exported. So if 10% of, I don't know if that's right, 10% of the households pay 30% of the taxes, clearly we're exporting millions and millions of dollars that should be used for the beach. Finally, going back to Broward County, I'll just tell you, it's coming. I lived in Broward County before this, I lived there eight years, they overbuilt, people will start coming to this beach, right? They're not going to find parking in Varn Park, they're not going to find parking along A1A, they're going to come north, they're going to go to Jungle Hut, they're not going to find parking there, they're going to keep going further north, they're going to go to 16th Street. Finally, what they're going to do is just start double parking on the grass, there's going to be nowhere to park. Our beaches are going to become overcrowded. They just approved 6,000 homes in Bunau. 6,000. When all these houses are built, there's going to be tens of thousands more people and they're all going to want to come to the beach. And I finally say, and, and just bear with me 30 seconds.
No, you gotta, you gotta, gotta cut you off. We've got more people in the queue.
Okay. I would just say, follow the money. The home values may go up, but you know who's making money here? You know who benefits? Toll Brothers, the real estate agents?
Thank you, sir.
Right? The contractors?
Thank you.
And other people, not the people that live in the homes.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mike Mahoney, Ocean Hammock. I just, Mike Mahoney, I have a southern accent. So listen, I just want to say, we live in the greatest country in the world because we have the right to vote and make decisions, okay? I don't see us having the right to vote here. Because, I mean, I've gone to the town halls, they, everybody voiced, and I'm just hoping you guys have common sense, are reading the tea loves, tea leaves that's happening here, okay? Because it's, it's just not right. And I just found out that we're the only community, you said like you've vetted all your tax capabilities, we're the only community in Florida that is not using a local option sales tax of half percent. So do your homework, but I've already done my homework and that is true. So you're making a comment that's not true.
Well, I didn't say anything against that.
Okay, but you guys are trying to do something. We live in, I, listen, I love Florida, I love everything that we're doing here, but it's not right to put it all on us, not all of us. I guess you're spending the money, you're doing all this other stuff, helping it, but because you guys can't get Palm Coast to do anything, we're unincorporated, so we have to burden it. It's not fair. Okay? And I hope you guys, I don't know, I would love you guys, at the end of this meeting, tell us how you really think. Because I've called every one of years and you're kind of behind the scenes, think it's not right, but what are you going to do? That's your excuse or your answer, and it's not fair. So the other thing I brought up, even when we're at the town halls, and I got the answer that is too expensive, pay by plate parking. Okay? Because anybody that lives here on the Hammocks, okay, we're not, we're walking, we're taking whatever, how we're getting there, okay? And how can that be too expensive that you just put in a machine that the people have to go in and pay? And they said they put that, they threw that out the window, say, no, you can't do that. So all I have to say is, I hope you guys are listening to what's happening here because evidently you want to do a good job, but if you want to stay in your position, we're trying to tell you what we want. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes? Go ahead.
How do you do this?
Just lay it down there and we'll get, is Carlos watching? Okay. You gotta bring it.
Move it down a little bit, sir. Good assistant up front there.
Okay, my name is Tom Tant, 3311 North Ocean Shore Boulevard. We've been living there for 38 years and we're homesteaded there. I'm going to start with your letter on this assessment with the items that you say, here are the key facts. You said special benefit property, oceans, ocean flood reductions, market ability and property values and residential improvement partials. I'm referencing on this letter dated 2/14/23, Board of Commissioners here from Flagler County with the chairman, Greg Henson, giving us a recommendation to the Department of Natural Resources to build seawalls. Seawalls that are 25 feet high, and the seawalls 25 feet high.
Tom, you gotta talk into the mic.
Okay. Seawalls that are 20 feet, feet high are $2,000 a square foot that 38 property owners have paid for. These seawalls do exactly what the commissioner says. It protects property, it protects the property, it protects the beaches, and it protects us. And we just found out that we are actually paying property taxes on those 2,000, $200,000 seawalls through Jay Gardner. And now you want to give us a special assessment for putting sand, sand on property that's not ours. The seawall is on our property. What you're doing is refreshing the state and the federal property. And as you said, Andy Dance, it goes out into the ocean. That's federal property. That is not homeowner property. So let me give you an example. Do you have a preservative next to your house? Federal preservative or state preservative? Do they want to improve that? Do they come back to you with a special assessment to improve it? No, we don't own that land. You're putting that improvement on state and federal property. And I have the statutes that persist that. Our seawall is on our property that you recommended we put on, and now you're going to do a special assessment, which is a tax, and we're going to pay property taxes on the seawall that you asked us to You're putting that improvement on state and federal property. And I have the statutes that persist that. Our seawall is on our property that you recommended we put on. And now you're going to do a special assessment, which is a tax. And we're going to pay property taxes on the seawall that you asked us to put in. That's double taxation, and that is wrong. Check it out. I have it all documented. Try to do it, and you'll see what the consequences are. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Barbara Tant. Married to Tom Tant. Live at 3311 Ocean Shore Boulevard. We've homesteaded that home for 38 and 1/2 years. And I'm going to relinquish the rest of my three minutes to my husband, Tom.
Thank you. This is Tom Tant, 3311 North Ocean Shore Boulevard, Flagler Beach, Florida. And again, this is not our property that you are improving. This-- we do not have access to it. The public has access to it. Our property is behind our seawall that you recommended that we build for $200,000, and you taxed us on it. And now you want to assess a special assessment for putting sand, not on our property, but on state and federal property. And I have the statute that says it's state. It's Florida Statute 161.161-5, Florida statutes. And so why are we going to do this? Does the public, other people in Flagler County, pay for preserves when they improve a preserve? Or let's say you're on a property, and they improve a park next to you. Do they charge you for doing that park and improving it? No, they don't. So why are they charging our property owners for that? And the people behind us for that? Because that improvements are being not put on our property. It's being put on state and federal property. I rest my case.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Pat Dahlberg. I live in Palm Coast. I live in the F-section. I would like to say, first off, four to six months ago, you all voted on the half-cent tax. And you could vote on it, because you did. And two people on this commission said, "No," which I thought at the time was the-- I'm not going to be insulting-- the worst decision they ever made. I don't know why they made it, and it's not my business why they made it. But that means that you can vote on it, and you should. Because sending it to a referendum is going to get voted down. Because people never want to vote yes on the tax. They're going to see tax? No. Do not let this go to a referendum. Vote on it again. If you have to put it on the agenda, put it on the agenda. And vote on it again. You can do it. Don't tell me that Palm Coast doesn't agree. Figure out a way to make Palm Coast agree. Figure out a way to make Flagler Beach agree. You guys are supposed to be politicians. Politicians can talk anybody into anything. So do it. My father was a politician. He could talk anybody. He could sell ice to Alaska, and he could do it. So you can do it. You can do it in Bunau, too. Get them to agree. And that fella that put up that thing about, you know, you buy a car, and it's only going to cost shacks amount? Take his numbers-- it was on the thing-- and use his numbers. And also, I come from Bethany Beach, Delaware. They have parking meters everywhere. Put the parking meters up. There's-- and theirs are expensive. $4 for two hours. That's ridiculous. I was very upset when they put them up. But people paid them. People come to the beach. They want to get out and use the beach. They're going to pay your parking meters. And this was really unpopular. Have you ever thought about putting a toll gate on the Flagler Beach Bridge and giving the people who live on Flagler Beach the cards? Give them the cards. They live there. They should have the cards. But the rest of the people are tourists. There are so many tourists on that beach. Give them the $3 charge. You'll make a lot of money. Why haven't you done it? I mean, come on. That's all I got to say.
Well, before you go, we can't put the toll on the bridge. It's DOT's bridge. But it has been thought of, believe me. But we can't put a toll on the bridge. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Pam Rosen. I'm at 54--
Come up a little closer.
Pam Rosen. I live at 54 Seascape Drive. I'm not going to say everything I was going to say because it's all been said. I just-- I just want to emphasize, I went to a presentation in 2017 about the dire state of our beaches and the renourishment. And it is-- it is a proven process that works. It might look like it washes away, but over time, it does bring back the beach and protect the dunes and push the waves further out. I've seen it happen in Virginia Beach, Virginia, and other places that use it. So I'm in support of the project. But it's an ongoing project. It's got to happen year after year, just like the fire department, the schools, all the other county services. So we need to have an ongoing dedicated program for this beach renourishment. And it's got to be viable and fair to everyone. As everybody said, the whole county benefits, whether it's from the tax dollars that it brings in or the economic development potential. It just-- it's not fair to put the burden on the Barrier Island folks. I agree. I live on the Barrier Island. I probably get more benefit than someone that lives in West Flagler. So I'm not opposed to a reasonable MSBU, as Commissioner Hanson was talking about. But it has to be spread throughout the county. So I really would like to encourage you to put the sales tax-- to me, that from every-- the things I've heard, that seems the less painful for all the residents of the county-- put it back on your Commissioner's agenda and vote yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is James Adhirn, and my wife Amy is over here. We live in Sea Colony. There are things that-- I don't want to repeat what everybody else has said, but other people who come to use this beach, you know-- you've heard all those comments. I know you're tired of it. But FEMA is more of what I want to discuss. They're not doing anything. Why not use the dunes toll increase and then set up a new toll over on, like, 100 and Bunau area, near Flagler Beach? Then, people who go over those, you collect that money. It's not fair to tax us specifically. And we know for ADA-- obviously, I am deaf-- and we don't complain about lights for hurricane evacuations. But I am complaining about this because this is not fair.
Good evening.
Evening.
I am not going to say all the things I was going to say because most of them have been said. But one thing I did want to make clear to everyone in this room is that this year, the general fund dollars are contributing to the plan. And I can-- I believe that they will also be part of the ongoing blended plan. And so we all are contributing for this year through our property assessment. So the MSBU, in essence, will be another tax, almost a second tax, to the residents on the Barrier Island. The other thing I wanted to bring up was that ad valorem-- the property values for Flagler County, compared to 24 values, they increased by 9%. And if that was to happen again next year, which it probably will with all the new construction, et cetera, that brings-- at staying at the same mill rate, that brings another $13 million to the table. So why don't we use that $13 million towards a speech plan since it's so important? And what was the other-- the other thing I was still not clear on was that part of the notice that talked about facilities. And don't-- this is a question I'd like clarification on. Doesn't the county still need to have some public accesses put in place for Reach 2 and Reach 3? And if so, is that what facilities would mean on this MSBU? And that's pretty much all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
My name is Bob Walker, and my wife and I have lived in Painters Walk, 3063 Painters Walk, for 25 years. I hope to be the shortest one denied in terms of speaking. I recognize this is very complex. Don't know which way it's going to go. But if you do use the MSBU, my one thing I would ask you is that don't do it based on square footage. I'm already paying a penalty for having a larger square footage home than my next-door neighbor. Two people live in my house. Two people live in their house. Why would I pay more for beach access? So that's really one of the main reasons I came here today. I don't know which way it's going to go. I'd ask you to consider that, though. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Allison Clay. I live at 11 Cordova Vista, and I just have two very brief comments. The first, Mr. Chairperson, was your comment about how, you know, we're still working with the other municipalities to sort of figure things out. But isn't it true that by starting this process this year with the zero amount, regardless of what happens with those, you've started the process, and it's going to be moving forward, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I just want to make that point. Yes, you have all those conversations to happen, but because you've started this process, we're headed down that pathway.
Absolutely.
And the second is really obvious, I think, but maybe just hasn't been explicitly stated. You're elected by the county. There are 6,300 homes that are being impacted by this. We can all not choose to reelect you. It's not going to do anything, right?
Good evening.
Hi. I'm Kathy Connolly. I live at 3186 North Ocean Shore Boulevard. Couple things. I agree with, you know-- we don't think this is a fair tax for just some of us when everybody in the county benefits. And I would like to ask you to go back and work with the other municipalities before you try to bring this tax to us. Come back to us with a better plan. You know, one of the things with the beach refurbishment, which I think is important-- we want to save our beaches. But you mentioned it will help A-1A not wash out. Well, you know, that's DOT. So maybe we can get more money from them. Let them contribute to the pot. And then the other thing that I think-- that probably is what prompted me to drive up to West Palm Beach because this is our retirement home, and we rent it out as a vacation rental. So in addition to our huge property taxes, we also pay tourist tax. But what prompted me to get in my car and come up here and speak tonight was-- this is-- you know, if ad valorem is the only way to go, then come back to us with numbers, not zero. And then we're going to come back to you again next year. Put everybody through this all over again. When you have some real numbers for next year, then come to us about an ad valorem tax. Thank you.
Thank you.
You just touched on something I wanted to touch on, but--
What was your name, please?
My name is Nick Brighter, 4000 Oceanside Drive.
Thank you.
I drove up from Miami to my property there on 4000 Oceanside. I learned a lot tonight about the blended funding, about the-- you know, and the possible that there will be a cap of some sort. However, I was wondering, what is this situation in a catastrophic event like a hurricane? I mean, could this-- we be part of that funding to restore the beaches then? And how high could that figure go? Because, I mean, you could get a $10,000, $20,000, $30,000 tax bill with the threat of losing your home, where the hurricane would be the least of your problems, you know? So I was wondering, what is the plan for that? For a catastrophic event?
Yeah, we'll address that when-- at the end, we'll address that. Thank you.
My name is Jody Bollinger. I live at 5648 North Ocean Shore Boulevard. First of all, I would like to say I'm in favor of the new half-cent sales tax. I know Commissioner Carney said that if it were to pass, that the county has no jurisdiction as to tell the municipalities how to spend the money that they would receive. So I guess my question is-- I had understood that at one time, Ms. Petito had gone to all the municipalities. And at one point, Palm Coast had said they would-- whatever is generated from the half-cent sales tax, that they would give half of the money for beach renourishment and keep the other half from themselves. And I believe that's what Bunau said. The city of Flagler Beach and the city of Beverly Beach had said they would contribute all of the half-cent sales tax generated for beach renourishment. So I guess I'm just asking if that is correct? And would Ms. Petito have to go back to the municipalities again? Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. Stephen Wright, 3391 North Ocean Shore. Just have a couple questions. One is, is that in February, I was here and went and talked about Reach 2 and the progress there. In March, all of us beachside signed an easement to allow this to happen In March, all of us beachside signed an easement to allow this to happen and to allow for Reach 2 to occur. Since then, I really haven't heard anything. I was promised by the city attorney that there would be no cost to us on beachside for this Reach 2 project. So that's my first thing. Just a question there. The second is, I'm okay with paying my fair share, but I just want it to be fair. That's all. And I'm asking you to consider that, to be fair with everyone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Denise Bonayudo, and I live in Ocean Hammock. I have one comment, because everybody has said everything that I was going to say. I've heard that everybody in this room seems to think that the half-cent sales tax is the right way to go, and I happen to agree with that. Wasn't sure I did before, but now I do. And my question is, for the people that voted it down, you said no. What was your solution to the funding problem after you said no? What did you come to the table with after you said no?
You can't come back up twice.
I just wanted to...
No, you can't.
We have...
Ma'am.
Nope, the beach is not...
Next speaker, please.
I've held that for...
Mr. Hamilton?
It's not accessible for the handicap. It's not. And there's a lot of people that live there that can't get to the beach.
Thank you.
Hi, Kristy Carson, 25 West Mare Place. Just two questions. I know that the county already has an environmentally sensitive lands fund, and I believe that the beach probably should be at the top of that spending category right now. And then I think if you guys would have maybe not showed up so late to the game and had more information before you sent your letter, you probably wouldn't have all these people here so bad. So the next time, you know, more information would be helpful.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Louise Knopf. I live on West Mare Place as well. And since we cannot charge going over the Flagler Beach Bridge, how about we charge them to access the beach instead? Why can't we do that?
Okay.
If we can't charge them to park, Volusia County charges people to drive on the beach, why can't we charge them to access our beach that we're paying for? Thank you.
Evening.
Hi, I'm Amy Ahern. My husband spoke. We live on Avalon Lane on Ocean Boulevard. So I did have a question. I know the sales tax, I know there was a comment made here that only a small percentage of that would be able to be used as discretionary, how you wanted to be able to use it. But what I'm hearing overall is you're saying, this is a very large plan and how there's a bunch of pieces in it. It should still be a piece. It's okay if it's a little bit. If it's a little bit, that's a little bit. That's a little bit less off of the homeowners. So while I don't want to pay that tax, but it is a smarter investment, and it's an easier way to collect it across the board. And I do agree with many of the people here who have said, you guys got to the positions that you're in because you're good talkers, you're good negotiators. Use those skills and bring the other areas into the plan. I agree. You can do it. And I do believe that we still do have some portion of responsibility to take care of it. We live here. We live here, too. So please do try to do that.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any... Mr. Hamilton?
Good evening. Richard Hamilton, resident of Island Estates, which has been pointed out is technically in the middle of the intercoastal waterway. Last week you had a commission meeting. Two of you were absent, but the three that were here, I brought along a little prop, an elephant. To a straight, that you had just sent out a letter, and it was nothing on the agenda. I brought the elephant because it was the elephant in the room, was this letter that you had sent out. Today, I did not need to bring that elephant. A whole herd of elephants came here to give you their opinions. What I want to just ask from you now is, listen to your voters, listen to the residents, pull this item off the agenda completely for today. Okay, you may lose your timing, but the work you've put into it is clear. You still have a lot of work you keep saying you need to do to it, to make it work. You need to do the exercise. So what are you going to lose if you pull it off today? Maybe you have to do some advertisements in December and start the process again. I pointed out in my letter, I believe myself, that your process is defective and can be legally challenged. So there are items in that that you have to resolve. That's all I want to say. Listen to your voters, listen to your residents. Pull this item today and get on with the rest of the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there any other public comment? They need to go ahead and come to the podium and get in line. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Gail Spence. My husband and I retired here from Virginia, from Washington DC area. I live in Matanza Shores. I lived there almost 30 years. When we first came here, there was nothing developed between Marineland and Flagler Beach. Over the last 30 years, you've given developers the property to build on that ocean and on the intercoastal side. The environmental impact of having more people coming in from the Hammock Resort Hotel and the Ruth Carlton Hotel. Why not charge them an impact fee to use the beaches before you approve their building? And I don't understand where the money is going to for the Hammock Bridge. I think you need to increase it or issue beach passes for people who don't live on the barrier island. The parking, there's parking meters all over the beaches. I've lived in Miami. I've been to St. Augustine, been to Ponte Vedra. There's parking meters everywhere. That would increase the revenue for our portion of the county. But you really need to have these new developers pay an impact fee to keep our beaches restored. We're also getting our environmental impact on the intercoastal side is being, is being the animals and things, the fauna and flora. I was on the A-1A scenic highway committee, and I don't know why there's not more people coming in from the, or as part of the county. Mr. Hanson's been to those meetings, and the environment is very special to me, since I'm a retired federal impact, environmental impact inspector. I worked with Al Hadid to build a boardwalk up at Marineland, and we used U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to put in barriers to keep the beaches from washing out. That was before Hurricane Matthew in 2016. The area floods. They tried to put in more pipelines through A-1A, but it'll still flood because you approved more development, which has covered up our retention ponds, and concrete does not absorb water. Fortunately, my house is built on enough cocaine rock that we have not had a major impact yet. I haven't had any flooding, which I've been damn lucky. But you need to increase the impact fees of all this new development that you're approving...
Thank you.
...to keep our beaches restored.
If anybody else wishes to speak, come on up.
Hi, my name is Rich Drogas. I'm at 21 Flaxton Lane in the city of Palm Coast. I hear for other reasons as far as the taxation increases and so forth, and I'll speak later. But sitting here, listening to the other residents and what is happening here, you know, I don't understand, I mean, I don't use the beaches much either, but as a citizen and my neighbors here, especially the fixed incomes, they can't afford that, that they have that property. I have no problem paying an additional penny in taxes to support it, because that's a minimal thing. And I think that you ought to look at other things and be creative, like people that rent their properties here to go to those beaches, find a way to attach some tax to that, the hotels and so forth and so on. There's got to be other ways. Be creative. It's just, this is not the only answer. And I think that if somebody really thought about it and went in, dig deep, and get some ideas together, you guys can come up with a solution that everybody can live with. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public speakers? All right, seeing them, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back. We'll answer a few more of the questions. Right off the top, we did talk to the Dunes Development District about increasing the bridge toll, but that was voted down by the Dunes Development, people that managed the bridge themselves. We did bring that proposal to them, but it was voted down by their board. To the ladies, there was a couple of questions about the budget. If, I just would ask that you become a little familiar with our transparency page on the county's website. It shows you exactly where your taxes go. You can put in your address in there. And increases minimally every year, we're straddled with the decisions of mandated increases across the board, from health insurance to retirement funds and everything else. So you just can't say that a certain percent increase can be allocated to the beach. We really did that this year by setting aside a significant amount of funds to the beach funding program, setting a precedent to be able to do that moving forward. But it's, you know, I would recommend that come a little more in tune with the budget process, that come to our budget meetings. It's one of the meetings that are the least attended out of all of our meetings, and it's the one that I've heard tonight, a lot of questions about, and you can become a lot more familiar with the county's budget by attending our budget meetings. Yeah, impact fees, we're limited by state statute on impact fees, and they can only be reevaluated so often. Right now, we're in a period where we can't bring back impact fees or look at them. I don't even know if we could do one for the beach.
No, that's what I was actually thinking. There's no, an impact fee has, you have to have a rational nexus as to what you're charging as an impact fee and what that fee is going to go to pay. And aside from it being to a Parks and Recreational Impact Fee, but that would go to involve parks, and if you're beach, all of beach nourishment, because the beach itself does not fall under a complete jurisdiction of our Parks and Recreation Department, and is not necessarily a county park, I don't think legally we could tie impact fees or revenue from impact fees to beach nourishment under Florida statutes.
Impact fees are a lot more complicated than they seem, and again, a lot of money goes to consultants to be able to base those impact fees and whether they're real or not. But I'll defer to our attorney. Catastrophic events are basically handled with assistance from the federal government. I didn't know if you wanted to speak to that, Ms. Petito, based on other municipalities, but the rebuilding wouldn't fall on the MSBU. It's a state and federal issue in addition to the county.
It is, and I think when we looked at the establishment of a beach management plan, whenever you have a catastrophic event, depending on the nature of it and who our funding partner is, if it's something that you're getting funding from FEMA, they typically cover 75% of the cost. Then they're looking to the local agencies, which in this case would be the state and the county. We would have to contribute 12.5% of the project. The state would likely contribute 12.5%. So at the local level, we're still on the hook for 12.5%. So if we had the beach management fund plan, that's where the match would come from, to rebuild it. But that would be leveraging funding from FEMA as well as the state DEM.
So it would still be based on the blended formula that we've talked about. It wouldn't fall entirely on an MSBU. And again, all these MSBU's are annually renewed. There was a discussion about the inter-local status with municipalities and the inter-local agreements regarding the half cent. Those have been established. It's just that we were, we couldn't go forward with it. I think somebody mentioned a vote. The half penny never got to a vote. It just didn't progress. We had consensus not to move forward, so the interlocals never moved forward for ratification. But there's wide support for them, as people have mentioned. I don't personally think there's a problem with those, but there's, they haven't been ratified, but they haven't been brought to the other municipalities yet. ESL funds can't be used. ESL funds have a dedicated language. It was voter-approved by a referendum. So yes, the voters have, in the past, voted to tax themselves for important purposes. ESL is one of those purposes where the voters, by 60%, voted to tax themselves to preserve natural areas in the county. Am I a glass-half-full kind of guy? I think the voters, there's an opportunity for them to vote in favor of protecting the beach, if it does come to a referendum. But it will take a Herculean effort by all involved for that to happen. To my commissioners, did I miss anything?
We want each to individually address.
But public comment, just public comment right now, if we missed anything on public comment.
So there was talk about public access and what our obligation is. We have gone to FEMA. We have a letter to the federal government asking for a feasibility for an four-study. Part of that will pretty much determine if we can bring the Army Corps project further up north. But right now, it's only in Flagler Beach. And yes, you do have to provide public access in order to get that. So I don't know if these specific funds that we're talking about will be moved towards providing public access. The last time we looked, we have, we're able to, wherever our public access is, you can either go north half a mile or south a half a mile from that access point, and that is a federally accepted access point. I don't know if she's still here, but the 13 million, we actually, this year, we benefited $12 million, Catherine, from, Kathleen, I'm sorry, from, you know, more revenue based on new home construction. It's based on appraised values. Just for everybody's reference, we don't keep $13 million. We have to subsidize the constitutional officers here in Flagler County. So over half of it went to the constitutionals. Some of that other 6 million that we kept did go to the beach management fund plan. So we do benefit at the county level, but we have to split it up between five constitutional officers. It doesn't just come to our budget. It goes to all of the budgets.
Ms. Petito, did you have anything else to follow up? Okay. So with that, public comments closed. We've, at the beginning, we had a motion from Commissioner Hanson for approval of the unincorporated barrier island beach renourishment special assessment. We had it seconded by Commissioner Carney. So at this point, I'll have each of the commissioners comment their thoughts, if they choose, and we'll have to go to a vote.
I want to hear this way.
Pardon me?
Oh, I didn't know if you were going that way.
Whoever wants to speak first. Commissioner Hanson, anything?
No.
Commissioner Pennington?
Well, I think we were asked by the public several times to address the half cent and whether or not we supported it and the reasons, and I think I owe it to you to address my portion of it. The plan, as it was explained and has been seen, has several mechanisms of funding. It has a current existing half cent that is for infrastructure. It is, it's codified for infrastructure, which means roads, stormwater, the beach can be part of that. It expires in 2032. At that time, a board would have to put it back. The new half cent has to be done as a small county, local option, half-cent sales tax. It has to be done under infrastructure as well. It cannot be codified to just the beach, meaning that future boards, at any time, could decide to redirect the funding of that half penny. It, too, the way it was presented in workshops, would expire in 2032, meaning at the same time, both half cents would expire, and future board would have to put back both half pennies. But the new half cent has to be done under the word "infrastructure." And future boards will have to commit to using those funds, as well as the dedicated Ad Valorem that we're putting in this plan, as well as the existing half cent. Every year, a board, until we get that codified, and I don't know that we can, it looked like the memorandum we got, couldn't figure out a way to codify. It's more of a policy, it looked like, until we can get that done, you can't assume that the half cent would be just for the beach. You can't. The only dedicated, ongoing funding source for the beach would be TDT, which is tourism, and an MSBU. And they have to have a dedicated funding source in order to get, apply for state and federal funds for matches. So I don't think, the way I read it, that the state's going to look at, you know, our half cent here and half cent there that say they can go to infrastructure, and they're going to look at Ad Valorem, which could be put for anything, and consider that. The only dedicated funding source would be the MSBU and the TDT funds, and we are taking the max TDT funds, the tourism funds. We are not a county that has revenue sources like other counties with beach plans. We don't have the tourism funds to support it. So if we're going to stand up a beach plan, it has to have dedicated funding, and right now, that is an MSBU and the TDT funds. And so you ask about the half cent, and I told you my stance on the half cent any time. I'm willing, you know, to talk about all these funds going to the beach, the Ad Valorem and everything else, but if I'm not here two years from now, which maybe I won't be, a future board can determine that they would like to use that somewhere else. I mean, not for nothing, but District 4, which is the large western port that you talked about, they have an $80 million unfunded stormwater plant. They're being flooded by the St. John's River, and they have about 100-plus miles of dirt road. They don't live on paved roads, and that's unfunded as well. So future boards can decide projects out there, because their flooding is getting worse every year, deserve the current half cent or the new half cent or the Ad Valorem that goes to this project. I don't know. So that is exactly why I didn't feel like, you know, a lot of this project needs to be codified, so that you're not here every two, three, four years, talking about your MSBU or where did the half cent go for this, because it went somewhere else. So that's just me, so I don't want to speak for anyone else.
Commissioner Carney?
I am, I'm on the side of the gentleman that talked, I don't know about misappropriation, but I do agree that too much time passed. I'm a resident of Flagler Beach for 25 years. I lived the beach management plan in Flagler Beach, and we've known for 25 years that our beach has eroded. We were lucky in Flagler to prove it. We were lucky in Flagler to get the county to come behind us and support and spend a lot of resources, maybe not hard cash, but a lot of resources on getting that Army Corps project. The ideal scenario in Flagler County is an 18-mile of a federally funded beach plan. There's no doubt about it. If the big one hits in Flagler Beach... If the big one hits in Flagler Beach, the federal government comes back and pays 100% to bring it back to where it was. There's lots of gaps. There's lots of work that did fall short of the coastal community. I believe it. I know it. We're trying to make up, not asking for a pass, but we're trying to make up. Monies were spent in places that possibly did not have to be spent, but the beach only recently has become a top priority, and I think this board has made it a top priority. When I chose not to vote for the half cent, it was a lot of the same reasons. I could not see it being an infrastructure tax. I could not see where we could say to future boards, "You have to put $4 million a year in the beach based on the half-cent sales tax." I can't do that. Not that I don't want to do it. I can't do it. So the plan, the way it was presented originally, and I am the one that asked Ms. Petito to produce all the meetings that took place in our community for this beach management plan for the last two years, and she is right, there were over 88. We're not just trying to make something up here. This has been an ongoing issue in Flagler County, and no board has wanted to step up and finally put their stamp on how we're going to do this. It's very, it's very painful. There's no other way to explain it. The half-cent sales tax will not solve this problem in its entirety, in its entirety. I'm willing to take every tourism dollar I can take, as long as I'm sitting up here, to fund that beach. There's no doubt about it. I also feel very strongly that all municipalities, Flagler Beach, Marineland, and Beverly Beach need to come to the table and at least help us, because we can't put sand on a beach that we don't control, because we have to maintain it. If we don't control it, we can't maintain it. So it's a vicious circle. This staff has worked tirelessly on, and I did put some numbers together. Reach 1 was the Army Corps project. Reach 1 was funded without one taxpayer dollar, and it was over 40 million, $35 million. Reach 2 is in the $40 million range, being paid for, from what I'm hearing, there's no final word yet, 100% by non-taxpayer dollar. We are fighting hard. And after, once we get, at least to where we are, on, I am, I have met with one of our representatives on going back to the FDOT and working very hard to get funding on a regular annual basis from FDOT. Again, we can't do it until we have the plan. So this board, just like every other board, sets an annual budget. I am struggling with the use of the word "dedicated." So I've asked staff, we asked staff, and we asked Ainsley, who is our coastal engineer, to define dedicated funding. I'm not happy with the answer that I got. And after this budget process, before our legislatures go, legislators go back, I will be going to Tallahassee to ask that exact question and hearing the answer for myself from the FDEP. So until I get better answers, and that's why I want to take this year, or half a year, whatever it's going to take us, to get this thing right. Because we can throw all the taxes we want, a half-cent sales tax you can't take back, an MSBU we do annually. We still need to be able to prove it, and this is going to go on forever in Flagler County. But at least give us credit for trying to step up and do something, because no one before us has done it. So we're here, we're almost here, we hear you, we hear you loud and clear, but we've got to get more data to make this thing sound right or make it look right. We need more data.
Commissioner Richardson?
I'm not going to repeat anything anyone said. I'm going to personally thank you for coming tonight, to bringing yourselves here, to telling us what you feel, how you feel. We are listening to you. Keep in mind, we are trying to do everything possible, and we have a lot of brilliant people here on this dais. I'm proud of this board. It takes a lot of guts to be up here and to listen to people that are hurting. So we are there for you, and we are going to do what we can. That's all I've got to say. Just realize that we are working every meeting to try to get the beach managed to the level it needs to be. So thank you for coming today. I wanted to thank you for your respect tonight and for coming, and I'm going to leave it at that. Mr. Chair?
Thank you. All right, let me tie this up in a nice little package. One of the things that go back to the moment of silence, right, civil discourse, I want to thank you all for the time here and for being a good audience. It's hard sitting through two hours of this, so I appreciate it. Thank you. And to our board, we don't always agree. We haven't agreed on the beach management, but we have good discussion. We don't take things personal. We disagree, and we try to solve problems, and this is one where we haven't come to an agreement yet. But we don't take our disagreements personal. We just try to continue to keep solving these. Got a couple of questions for staff, based on some of the comments. On the new sales tax, if it is commission-approved, we get to approve and codify the language on how that sales tax money would be spent. Is that correct?
Well, under the statute, it's, if it's just commission-approved, as long as you get four votes, the votes can, then it's going to be used for operating purposes. Now, the resolution that would adopt such a tax, you could then allocate and put the language in that resolution or ordinance for what the purposes of that tax will be. It will not bind a future commission, as has been the concern. Two years from now, there could be a subsequent ordinance or resolution passed where it will repeal this, or we shall change the proceedings of this tax to go this way. It's not bound like a tax of the, where the funds that are gathered by the tax are to be expended. And usually, those taxes also include, most jurisdictions when they pass them include commissions or other committees that are there for oversight for spending, to make sure that there's transparency, and so the public knows that the monies are being spent. There's oversight for those. But in the case of the small county, if the monies are not being pledged to pay for bonds or pay down debt, it can be used for operating expenses, and that's going to be the prerogative of you as a commission.
Right. So in my opinion, and based on the show of force here tonight, I think if a half penny was passed with language that dedicated its use for beach nourishment and for the different things that we've allocated, there's pretty good consensus that future boards are going to listen to the same people that are here and would abide probably by those same plan if it's multi-year. Also, if it's codified by the, I guess in either way, we, the expiration date can be set for any time, under, up to 20 years. Is that correct?
Right. It'll be statutory at that point.
So it doesn't have to be six years. It doesn't have to be eight. I think there was discussions about the different timelines based on other expirations, so that we could look at county finances as a whole when these other assessments, the other existing half penny expired, we could take a look at it all as a whole, but there's no time period specific, as long as it's under 20 years, 20 years or less. I still, I think, I'm not going to speak for Commissioner Hanson. I've been in support of the plan that we've been working with now for almost a year that has a balanced approach to funding the beach. It includes the half penny. It includes a nominal fee for the MSBU. The prior fee was $160. That whole plan has been, in my opinion, has been vetted numerous times. It's based on projections. Projections can change. But in my opinion, the additional funds needed by the half penny are critical in making that work. The key point, we've talked about construction, we've talked about how much state and federal funds have been put to construction, but we haven't talked about the renourishment. And this project only works with repeated renourishment, and that's the key and expensive component to all this, is the renourishment. If we don't put a plan together with dedicated funds, which in my opinion are ones that are backed by either a commissioned vote for a period of time, for a referendum, the MSBU unfortunately is one of those that is dedicated. If we don't substantiate these dedicated funds, I fear that our partners at the state and federal government are not going to take us seriously and help us with these construction projects, especially the initial beach nourishment, if we don't commit to maintaining and renourishing those moving forward. The renourishment is where this expensive project is. We don't have federal funds, except in certain instances, the Army Corps project. If it's a name storm, they will come back and help us with that. That's been given. That's why we're trying so hard to get the next part federalized, so that we can have that help. But it's the renourishment that's the key. It's, the renourishment is the expensive part and the part that has the dedicated funding. I don't believe I heard, there was a specific question about stating how you are going to fill the gap for the renourishment. I don't believe I heard an answer for that. And that's a really big question, whoever said that question, right? How are we going to fill that gap if it's not through the half penny? I don't think I heard an answer. And again, this is not for me to, to, just to have that discussion about disagreements. I think this is an area where we're still in disagreement about how we're funding or finding a way to fund that gap. And I don't think I have anything else to add to that. I just wanted to clarify some of those comments, state my case, or, as far as the MSBU goes, we're not going to take, Rose, I can't bring you back up. I'm sorry. As far as the MSBU goes, we've got a system in place that we approved last December. I'm not going to remove that from, in my opinion, I'm not going to vote to remove that. It's already in place. Mr. Hamilton said we can table it and bring it back. We bring it back in December. Why would we do that? You guys are coming back in December, and you're going to oppose us doing it. It's been in place for only a year. It's in place, so I'm going to vote to keep it in place, and it's zero amount right now. I'm not going to, again, my personal view is I'm not going to approve any amount that goes beyond what was established prior. To me, my limit is the base that was fair in the original estimate. So I'm looking at something in that neighborhood of $160 to $200, unless there's a graded scale that's somewhere in that range. But if it's anything exponentially beyond that, I'm not voting to tax you for that. It's not fair, and it's not equitable. I can only give you that, my word on that. My opinion is this funding plan has to be fair and equitable, and I'm not going to approve, I'm not going to vote, even though I'll keep the MSBU in place, I'm not going to vote for some exponentially exorbitant fee for you guys. What I've seen in the past as part of our plan is what I see as a fair and equitable plan. So with that...
Fairly.
Yes. Commissioner Hanson?
Yeah, just to wrap it up, I've spoken out in my district a lot about this, and I guaranteed him, as recently as last night, or two nights ago, that we would not exorbitantly do the MSBU. There's this $1,500 thing running around. That's not going to happen. As the chairman said, it's going to be reasonable, and...
But we can only vote for ourselves.
Yeah, yeah. So to me, to me, there has to be established a stream, a funding stream, that we don't have right now, to pay for the renourishment of the beach every single year. And the obvious and the elegant solution is the half-cent sales tax. It actually works. And I would not do it if we didn't codify in a resolution that states that the money is to go to fund the beach renourishment, and that's it. And the fear that some other county commission is going to change that is specious. It's, it's, it's an obligation we have as the county commission to protect our beaches. And further down the road, commissions that come past after us are going to feel the same way. I mean, it's our duty as county commissioners to protect that beach. It's our duty. We have to do it. And the half-cent sale tax actually accomplishes it with just a minimal financial impact on all of us. And 30% of the income would come from tourists, which I just love. But I don't understand why some of my fellow commissioners are against it, because we can codify it, we can dedicate the funding, and get it done.
Thank you.
We, we can get this done. We can get this done. If the commissioners, if we can just get together on this and agree on the half-cent sales tax and codify it and make sure it's, do it, then I think we can pay for this without an exorbitant, without an exorbitant tax on everybody else. And if we don't do the half-cent sales tax, that money's got to come from somewhere, right? So the math I've done is that we could do it with a .7, .7 addition ad valorem tax. And that's painful, because that tax goes up every year and goes on the value of the property. So that's, the only other answer, to have a dedicated source, is to do it with ad valorem taxes, and that is wrong.
All right, it's getting late.
One last, because we were addressed in that. The memorandum we received from staff September 9th, just the other day, says, "Even if codified in an ordinance or in our local agreement, future boards retain the power to amend, repeal, or redirect the funding. One board cannot legally bind another to a permanent spending decision."
I agree. I agree. I'm saying that they won't do it.
But this, that, the, 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 that's fine. It'll be a four-year plan. It will change on these folks that have an MSBU on them, based on the renourishment piece, because there's no contracts. The sand will go up, the construction will go up, and your boards will be looking at what funding mechanism they have to address the rising cost of the beach nourishment, and they'll look at the MSBU. You might vote next year for $160, but you may not be here, and I may not be here in three years, and future boards would be like, "Well, I'm going to look back at the MSBU and adjust the MSBU, because that makes the most sense." Every time that project comes in higher.
All right. Final round of comments. Anybody else? We've got to close this up. All right. We have a, there's no more public comment. We're going to call the question. We have a motion.
Are you roll-calling? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we can do that. I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson and a second by Commissioner Carney. So we'll do a roll-call vote. And this is, again, just for, to repeat, I'll repeat or restate as best I can. This is a resolution leveling unincorporated Berry Island Beach Renourishment Assessment at $0 and inter-local agreements with the property appraiser and tax collector to reimburse administrative costs of preparing the tax roll. costs of preparing the tax roll and collecting the assessment. Again, it's at $0. It keeps the MSBU in place for this year. And that's the motion, correct, Mr. Hanson?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so roll call.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pennington?
Nay.
Chair Danz?
Aye.
Commissioner Carney?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Thank you.
If you were here just for that one, I'll do a quick five-minute break. The rest on the agenda is on special assessments, the capital program, and the tentative millage rate and budget. We'll take a five-minute break. It's at 7:36 PM, still September 11th. All right, the next item is for special assessments. This is going to be to adopt a resolution approving the assessment rolls and levying the non-ad valorem assessments as follows, and I'll read these, so they don't have to be reread for the motion. The Espinola Special Service District at $11.76 per special assessment unit for the fiscal year '25 to '26. Rema Ridge Special Service District, $1,462 per special assessment unit for '25, '26. Flagler County Mandatory Solid Waste Collection and Disposal Special Assessment District at $445.20 per residential unit for the '25, '26. North Malacampa Drainage Basin District, $30 per parcel for '25, '26. Marineland Acres Drainage Basin District, $435 per developed lot and $220 per vacant lot for the '25, '26 assessment. Painters Hill Seawall Special Assessment District, $116.28 per front foot. That is for the '25, '26 assessment rate. Dune CDD Stormwater Assessment, $65.69 per ERU. And Nuisance Abatement Special Assessment, this is based on actual costs incurred, in this case for property identified within the backup material, it's an amount of $40,910.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the resolution approving the assessment rolls and levying the non-ad valorem assessments as previously read for the record.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. This time we'll go out for public comment. This is your time, sir. Yes, sir. And we'll start the public comment. There we go.
I own the property at 6653 North Ocean Shore Boulevard in Palm Coast, over in the hammock. I reside in Palm Coast now. Been a resident in Flagler County since about '92, '93, been investing here, my family has, since '84. We purchased the property that we're talking about now in 1989. Since Hurricane Matthew damaged the home, I've been unjustly and repeatedly obstructed by the county officials in my many efforts to repair my home. This quite shockingly, by my own county, when my own county demolished my home, the home that my only child was born into and spent her early childhood. Despite my many attempts to comply and cooperate with the county, they created an endless bureaucratic
All right, for those that stayed, thank you. We're going to reconvene our public hearing.
loop. When I was unable to satisfy the alleged requirements, which were not possible to do, I should not owe any money to the county for the unjust destruction of my home. The facts show a clear and simple story. A stop-work order was issued, in place by the county. When I requested the order to be lifted, so I can repair my home, the county claimed it was because my appraisal was insufficient, since it did not include the value of the home with the current damage. I challenged this by indicating to them why it was valid under the building code with the value before damage. The county admitted that I was correct. However, the stop-work order was never lifted. The appraisal we got on this home, you're allowed to put 50% into the home for repairs, they put a stop-work order in on that. We hired an independent to value the home, and the day before the, to go back in time, the day before the actual hurricane, and it came in at 1.0, I'm sorry, it might be 1.1 million. I could have put over half a million dollars into the house, they did a stop-work order at $150,000. So unfairly, they had a stop-work order, never gave me permission to reorder. I have 10 pages of notes, and hearing notes, having emailed each and one of you to read for tomorrow, I guess I sent it in. That's about it.
Thank you, sir. And as a reference, that's the nuisance abatement special assessment. Maybe, maybe not pick that up, we'll see.
Put your hand.
You'll have to lay it flat.
Down. No, it won't work? Here we go. Can you move it up a little bit more, sir? It's a little on an angle, and there you go. That's bright, okay. Thank you.
My name is Rich Drogas. Again, I'm 21 Flax Lane in Palm Coast, the city of Palm Coast. And on my current tax bill coming up, I realize only 1/6 of my tax dollars goes back to the city. And as you can see, this is what we deal with, and I know that Flagler County is probably aware of this, but in the city, we have these swells that are not being taken care of properly. And as you can see from the pictures, just after a normal storm, not a hurricane. So that's one of my big issues. But the main reason I'm here today is because the assessment of my taxes. We started out purchasing our house, and right now, we are now under homestead. But last year it was $4,998, okay? And now they want to charge me $6,200 as proposed. If not, that is not increased, based on my installation of a pool.
I'm going to just stop you for a second. Is your home in the city of Palm Coast?
Yes.
Okay, that would not be something that the county is in jurisdiction of, so...
I understand you can't do anything about inside the city as far as the swells. I just wanted for the record. The real reason I'm here mostly is because of, because I'm dealing with them on that already, I was at the meeting last night. But I'm here about the excessive amount on property tax. And so, as I can get back to where I was, I'm going to go from $5,000 to $6,000 minimum, because they now have added the pool, which the pool was supposed to be there before. But what I want to understand is how they can assess another $1,000, Flagler County, on the appraisals, on something that's not, you know, it's not living area, it's just a, it's a pad and a pool. And then plus, I bet you don't deduct the property tax, the half of the size lot, so I'm getting double taxed. So that's a real issue. I don't know how that rate comes up, but that's just not fair. I can't afford to keep doing this. I really can't. I moved here from Maryland, one of the worst states of tax, to move here to get a break and retire, and I'm going to fix income, but I went from a 28-square-foot house that my last tax bill was $4,278, and a larger lot, and a two-and-a-half-bath, three-level home, okay? I come here, it's just under 1,800 square foot, it's a three-bedroom, two-bath, standard-sized lot, and the, my water and sewage is monthly about $121 minimum, and it's $90 back at home, a quarter. Again, I understand there's expenses, but the homeowner insurance, your car insurance is double here, overdouble to what is there. And we're getting these increases, and I want to know, where does all that tax revenue come from, all these people moving in, like myself? Where's all that money going? Because I was expecting a tax break. A lot of people I talked to have been here for a while, was expecting taxes to go down. So I appreciate your time, but this has got to be addressed, where a lot of people are going to be moving out, because they can't keep this up. Thank you.
You had a question on your assessment with the new pool?
Yes.
Our, the property appraiser can help you in the back.
So my trip was worth coming here.
Absolutely. And the other question?
Was that my taxes went up $1,000 from last year, from $5,000 to $6,000. And that's not the proposed increase, it goes to $6,200 with the proposed increase.
And you're homesteaded? And you're homesteaded?
Yeah, I'm homesteaded 100%. And I was told last year by the appraiser, don't worry, next year they'll maximum raise 3%. Well, not according to my tax bill. It's up 21%.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yep.
Marvin Clegg, West Flagler. I'll be quick, because it's a simple request, that we remove the solid waste assessment off our tax bills if we can't do a better job of making... And now they want to charge me $6,200 as proposed. If not, that is not increased based on my installation of a pool.
I'm gonna just stop you for a second. Is your home in the city of Palm Coast?
Yes.
Okay, that would not be something that the county is in jurisdiction of, so...
I understand you can't do anything about inside the city as far as the swells. I just wanted for the record. This, the real reason I'm here mostly is because of, because I'm dealing with them on that already, I was at the meeting last night. But I'm here about the excessive amount on property tax. And so, as I can get back to where I was, the, I'm going to go from $5,000 to $6,000 minimum, because they now they've added the pool, which the pool was supposed to be there before. But what I want to understand is how they can assess another $1,000 Flagler County on the appraisals on something that's not, you know, it's not living area, it's just a, it's a pad and a pool. And then plus, I bet you don't deduct the property tax, the half of the size lot, so I'm getting double taxed. So that's a real issue. I don't know how that rate comes up, but that's just not fair. I can't afford to keep doing this. I really can't. I moved here from Maryland, one of the worst states of tax, to move here to get a break and retire, I'm on a fixed income, but I went from a 28-square-foot house that my last tax bill was $4,278 and a larger lot, and a two-and-a-half-bath, three-level home, okay? I come here, it's just under 1,800 square foot, it's a three-bedroom, two-bath, standard-sized lot, and the, my water and sewage is monthly about $121 minimum, and it's $90 back at home, a quarter. Again, I understand there's expenses, but the homeowner insurance, your car insurance is double here, over double to what is there. And we're getting these increases, and I want to know, where does all that tax revenue come from all these people moving in like myself? Where's all that money going? Because I was expecting a tax break. A lot of people I talked to have been here for a while, was expecting taxes to go down. So I appreciate your time, but this has got to be addressed, or a lot of people are going to be moving out, because they can't keep this up.
You had a question on your assessment with the new pool?
Yes.
Are, the property appraiser can help you in the back?
So my trip was worth coming here.
Absolutely. And the other question?
Was that my taxes went up $1,000 from last year, from $5 to $6,000. And that's not the proposed increase, it goes to 6,200 with the proposed increase.
And you're homesteaded? And you're homesteaded?
Yeah, I'm homesteaded 100%. And I was told last year by the appraiser, don't worry, next year they maximum you to raise 3%. Well, not according to my tax bill. It's up 21%.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Marvin Clegg, West Flagler. I'll be quick, because it's a simple request, that we remove the solid waste assessment off our tax bills if we can't do a better job of making the solid waste company more accountable. I've had many conversations with Mr. Hadid through the years. It was not always on our tax bills, as you all know. We used to be able to pick up the phone, and there was some accountability. Now we don't have that. And our contract apparently is being drafted by staff, administrative staff, not legal staff. And it is a bad contract. So I don't think it ought to be on our tax bills. I know you're bound by contract for a certain amount of time remaining, but as soon as we can get it off of there, let's either get it off there or do a good job with a good contract drawn up by our legal staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good evening, again, Richard Hamilton. My questions are related to the Painters Hill Tax District and the special drainage districts. And I anticipated the decision you'd make earlier, so I've already been downloading and looking at all the data there. Tom Tant made a very, what I thought was a very good point about that you're charging in the Painters Hill Tax District $100 a foot for the seawalls that they put in, which are not the issue, well, that's what you're charging for. But his issue was, well, are you going to double dip on the MSBU and on the Painters Hill Special Taxing District? I'm sure Mr. Davis has got similar questions as well. I think it would be unfair to do. Maybe you don't want to answer that yet, because there's so many details about the MSBU, you still don't know how to answer. But I think Tom deserved some sort of, at least, consideration as to what you're going to do with doing those. And I was also going to make one point. If $100 a foot is fair for defending the property in Painters Hill, if you did that for the whole 10 miles on footage charging the property, you'd have $6 million. So I just thought you might bear that in mind, too. That's just $100 a foot all along the frontage. Thank you, bye.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, that tax is a voluntary tax by the homeowners. It's not our, we're not taxing them. We built the seawall for them. We got the contractor, we borrowed the money, they agreed to have the cost of that put into their taxes, and that's how we did it. So we were able to pay for the seawall, and they're reimbursing the county through that tax. So it's a voluntary tax by the homeowners.
Thank you. And I would say, unless there's other clarification, when, until we get the engineering study, there's really no way to evaluate the seawall versus the other benefit if there's double taxation. I don't, Ms. Petito?
No, the only other thing I would say is that you can't have a seawall without having sand in front of it, because over time, it's going to continue to erode faster, at a faster rate, and the seawall will fail if you don't do replenishment of sand in front of it.
Okay, and regarding garbage, just to ask the question about, is there a loophole in the contract where they're not getting service?
Not that I'm aware of, and it wasn't drafted by staff. It did come through legal, so I'm not sure of the issue, but certainly we can talk to him. I know there had been an issue with the observance of holidays and whether or not they were having timely pickup on the holiday schedule, which I believe staff had fixed, addressed, but we can certainly talk to Mr. Clegg about the issues in the contract.
Who is our contractor?
The contractor is Waste Pro.
Waste Pro?
And who's his direct point of contact with staff?
Through staff. The contract person on the Waste Pro, I believe, is Andrew Ferrara in the procurement side. He works under Robert Rounds.
Okay. Is that who you've been talking to? Do you need more help? Okay. Well, we'll continue, we'll continue that conversation.
And Heidi, do you know when the contracts due?
I'd have to pull it, I don't know off the top of my head. But staff doesn't bring anything forward that hasn't gone through legal. I will 100% guarantee that. If it's a contract, it went through legal, it did not come direct from staff.
And are we okay with getting some information as to when it's going to renew? And does Waste Pro do customer surveys as far as satisfaction surveys?
I don't know off the top of my head, I'm not looking at the contract, so I don't know what's built into it.
Do you know how many customers we have?
I have, unless it's attached to the assessment, 9,000 roughly.
We should probably ask Waste Pro if they, they have to have a customer service department that has some data on how they're servicing these 9,000 customers. There are customers, too, so...
The current contract goes to 2028.
Oof. All right, well, maybe we need, maybe we need to...
I think Mr. Clegg's is unique, is it unique to your location? No? Okay. We will follow up. Thank you. Okay, so the assessments, is any other public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. We have a motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Richardson for adoption of the resolution approving the assessment rolls and levying the non-ad valorem assessments as read. I'll go ahead and call the question. You want to do roll call?
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pennington?
Aye.
Chair Dance?
Aye.
Commissioner Carney?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Item four, adoption of the fiscal year 2026 to 2030 five-year capital improvement program. The, let me get to four.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the FY 2026-2030 five-year capital improvement program.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Carney. At this time, we'll go out for public comment on the five-year capital improvement program.
What about?
All right.
Wait a minute, we did not address... I'm sorry.
What?
Under the nuisance abatement special, I had some questions on that. Darn it. We have a re-read, right? We have another reading on this?
Yes.
We have a second reading on this?
This comes back the second, no?
We have another hearing? Ah, darn it.
Okay, we're under public comment for the five-year capital improvement program.
Is there not going to be a presentation on it? No one's going to go through it and describe what is in it?
We've done that prior, and it's part of the backup documents.
Darlene Shelley, Palm Coast, K-section. There's over $31 million in grant estimates and nearly $2 million in local estimates for Flagler Executive Airport Fund 1401 in this capital improvement program. Included in these costs is nearly $20 million for another incompatible runway extension and parallel runway project that will further exacerbate the unbearable nuisance noise, quality of life issues, unmitigated environmental concerns, including toxic lead and chemical emissions from excessive piston engine training aircraft operations affecting the safety, health, and welfare of the local residents that already exist here. These failures are a result of Flagler County and Palm Coast to take the required steps to protect the local residents. The airport cannot operate safely, nor can it peacefully coexist with local residents in its current form. And expanding it will only make the situation worse and even more hazardous. The county has failed to address the inability to comply with FAA guidelines for safe minimum altitudes, failed to meet state airport standards of safety for aeronautical use when inspected on February 11, 2025, failed to obtain required navigation easements prior to the unlawful trespasses upon our properties, failed to involve the public in plans to enlarge the runways, failed to provide updated and accurate information on grant requests, failed to adequately address or mitigate thousands of valid comments and complaints regarding excessive nuisance noise and dangerous training operations over our homes, failed to complete any noise studies, failed to execute timely airport zoning regulations as required in 2009, failed to initiate actions to alleviate the frequent violations of airport rules and regulations, failed to update the outdated 2009 airport rules and regulations, and failed to protect the safety, health, and welfare of the residents of Palm Coast and Benel and Flagler County as required. In many documents, that I don't have time to list, but including your own comprehensive plan, flumes, you name it, they require you to protect safety, health, and welfare of the local residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on the capital, on the five-year capital plan?
Marvin Clegg, West Flagler.
Yes, sir.
I would just ask all you all to please stand up to staff when appropriate, and if there's any Taj Mahal request in there, any fat in there, please be brave enough to represent us and speak up. And some of you all have been doing that, and I want to thank you all for your service, because I know this is a tough job, and I know it's tough to stand up sometimes to staff, because I've been staff before, on the state level. But that's your role, you all represent us. And so I'm looking at some of these road projects and so forth, and I'll be back on that probably. But please, look for places where you can cut fat on some of these buildings and some of these programs that our former commissioners have gotten us into that require additional staff, and one thing leads to another, and this is why our budget goes up, our costs go up every year. So please, help keep this under limits.
Thank you, sir. In regards, or answering the question on the airport, those are not immediate funds for this fiscal, they're not allocated, there's no funds allocated for any of that work in this 25-26 fiscal year, they're years out, and I would venture to say they will be heavily discussed during the master planning process. So I would keep in tune with the master planning process as those long-range issues are discussed at the airport.
No, I asked the same question about those expenses, and I was told that as the master plan proceeds, I'm against the extension, and, but I was told this is not the time to address it, that what will happen is, it'll either fall off or stay on based on the master plan. It is not, we are looking at a one-to-five-year budget, but we're only going to do what's in the 2026 budget. It will fall off if it's not allocated. And you weren't here at the last meeting, maybe, I think it was last meeting? The airport director agreed to have the rules and regulations updated within the next 18 months. The master plan will also be done within the next 18 months, and there will be a business plan. I believe the timing is around 18 months.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. All right. Any final public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back and call the question on the...
Capital Improvement Program.
Yep. Approval of the fiscal year 26 to 2030 five-year capital improvement program. A roll call?
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pennington?
Aye.
Chair Dance?
Aye.
Commissioner Carney?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to adoption of the fiscal year 25-26 tentative millage rates and tentative Mr. Brower, Mr. Eichinger, welcome. All right, so this is the script, if you will, for the proposed millage and tentative budget. Do you want me to start off?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is Tom Brower, Financial Services, that'd be great, thank you.
Thank you. The Flagler County Board of County Commissioners will now enter the portion of the public hearing related to the Flagler County Fiscal Year 2025-26 Proposed Millage Rates and amended tentative budget as required by Florida statutes, chapters 129 and 200, and is advertised in the Truth in Millage or TRIM notices. If anyone in our audience is here for the purpose of contesting their assessment, a petition for adjustment with the Value Adjustment Board should be filed by 5:00 PM Monday, September 15, 2025, as stated on the TRIM notices that were sent by the county's property appraiser via first-class mail to every taxpayer on the property value assessment roll. For those in attendance wishing to address the board on this evening's proposed actions, citizen comments will be taken following the overview of the tentative budget by the Financial Services Office of Management and Budget Team, and as part of each motion presented to the board for consideration. The Financial Services Director, John Brower, will now present an explanation of the proposed and rollback millage rates.
Mr. Chair, this evening, we will take several actions related to the adoption of the proposed millage rates and tentative budget for fiscal year ending September 30, 2026. Tonight's hearing is the first of two public hearings required to be held per Florida statutes for a taxing authority to properly adopt millage rates and a budget for the upcoming fiscal year. As such, this is not the final budget hearing, and final adoption of the millage rates and budgets will not be considered tonight. Prior to the conclusion of this hearing, a specific date, time, and place of the second public hearing will be determined in order to adopt the final millage rates and final budget. Florida statutes require the name of the taxing authority, the millage rate to be levied, the rollback rate, and the percent, if any, by which the millage rate to be levied exceeds the rollback rate, be publicly announced. In addition, one of the requirements of the Truth in Millage legislation is to provide information about why proposed millage rates differ from the rollback rates. To begin, the Florida Department of Revenue has determined that Flagler County should combine the millage rate for the general countywide levy, proposed to be 7.8695 mils for FY 26, and the portion of the voter-approved millage used for the environmentally sensitive land operating expenses, proposed to be .1250 mils, for the purpose of calculating the total operating millage and the applicable rollback rate. As a reminder, rollback millage rate is generally defined as the millage rate which, exclusive of new construction, additions to structures, and a few other specific categories will provide the same ad valorem tax revenue for each taxing authority was levied during the prior year. For the fiscal year 2026, amended tentative budget for aggregate proposed operating millage for Flagler County Board of County Commissioners, countywide levy is 7.9945 mils, which is 4.98% greater than the rollback rate of 7.6151 mils. When the current year proposed aggregate millage rate exceeds the calculated aggregate rollback millage rate, the TRIM process, in conjunction with Florida statutes 200.065, requires that a notice of tax increase be advertised. For FY 2016, the increase in property tax revenue is essential to fund the appropriations needed to implement the general countywide budget. Mr. Chair, to summarize, the budget adjustments made between July 14 of this year, when the tentative budget was presented to the board, and now, consider the county amended tentative budget for fiscal year 2025-26 is $335,772,213, which is a net increase of $5,987,007 compared to the original tentative budget of $329,792,206. To easily review the changes, they are shown broken down in the fund by the fund function and category levels, along with the original and amended tentative budget as part of the document titled Schedule A that is included within your agenda packet. Happy to answer any questions pertaining to the changes or the budget before you at this time.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the board? I would now like to invite citizens to comment on the fiscal year 2025-26 Proposed Millage and amended tentative budget overview just presented. Please keep in mind that there will be an opportunity for citizens to comment on the fiscal year 2026 Proposed Millage Rates and amended tentative budget individually later in this proceeding, as each requested action will be a motion before the board to be considered for adoption. At this time, please come forward to the podium if you wish. if you wish to address the board. Yes, sir.
Again, my name is Rich Dregus. I'm in Palm Coast, Florida, in the F section. I'm just going from a newer resident of how much money it costs us just to live in this area compared to where I was, which was a big disappointment. I have a brother that's right around the corner, and everybody's telling me the tax rate is higher on the newer residents, which it is. But his tax rate wasn't much lower than mine. He's been there 14 years. So, again, I urge this... The commissioners to find a way, to dig deep, to find where waste is. I don't want to insult anybody, but the government finds a way to spend money needlessly. And it's just amazing how much money is done, pet projects, and unnecessary things. You're going to chase people out of this county, maybe out of the state. I can tell you, because I'm borderline, and I just got here two and a half years ago. So, I'm going to fix income. A lot of the people here earlier are going to fix income. Take that in consideration before you guys approve any additional expense. You know, find a way to find a way to cut some cost. I ran businesses for 25-plus years. I couldn't just increase the budget every year. I found a way to cut things, to make us profitable. You guys would be broke almost every year. So, you have to think like a business, not like, okay, we're going to generate more funds so we can take care of this project. Well, how about eliminating some waste along the way? You might not have to keep increasing the taxes that much. Just something to think about. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
David Eckert, CaliDill, sir. I believe this is the right section for me to bring up some of these points, but if it's not, tell me to sit down. So, Commissioner Carney started meeting with a discussion relative to dedicating definition that I think is part of this discussion. And then Commissioner Pennington talked about committing future boards and so forth within the context of some aspects of the budget. Within the overall budget, there's $8.2 million, I believe, identified for the shoreline this year, but all of that is remaining in general funds, I believe, as the budget is currently structured. So, when you go to Tallahassee and try to discern the aspects of what is dedicated, I'd like you to think about the possibility of also determining what is partially dedicated. And along those lines, within the $8.2 million, if this board and future boards were willing to commit to the park system being dedicated at 1.5 million of the 8.2 in the unincorporated area, that would become a proof of dedication. If $1.3 million out of the four-or-so million dollars of tourist tax were dedicated as a baseline, wouldn't be the total maximum amount, but it would still start to form a dedicated amount out of the total that is necessary. And the MSBU, and thank you for making sure that it stayed alive by your vote earlier, would be somewhere between $1.7 to $2 million just within the context of the way that it's been talked about from the MSBU. So, those categories come up to $4.5 million just from those three categories. Then this year, we have some portion of the ad valorem tax that is indicated. It's not dedicated within the context of being set aside. But if you did, on a very small amount, not commit the whole amount, but some portion of that, then you'd be going to Tallahassee saying that for the unincorporated area of requiring 8.2 million, we have dedicated $3, $4, $5, $6 million. So, we've done a good job at this. Then I would put the job back on the corporate... Or on the county attorney and take him along with you relative to go to the Department of Revenue and indicate to them what tools you would have within the context of the reality of the funding within this budget to use to achieve the other dedicated. Or if it's not necessary, start at the... Stop at the partially funded level because then you'll have the confidence of the federal and state efforts relative to justification for the grant programs federally and statewide to be category G-eligible and also for Army Corps eligibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll now close the first public comment section of the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, as previously mentioned, the budget document before you, titled Schedule A, shows the FY '26 tentative budget as presented to the board on July 14, 2025, listed by fund, function, and category, the adjustments made throughout the past summer in the next column, and the resulting FY '26 amended tentative budget. Any additional adjustments to the budget can be made by motion at this time.
Does any commissioner wish to offer a motion to further adjust the amended tentative budget before us this evening?
I do not.
I don't hear any further requests to amend.
All right. Mr. Chair, Florida statutes require the board to adopt proposed millage rates prior to adopting the related budget. As such, before you is Resolution Number 2025-73, a resolution to adopt the tentative millage rates for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2026, pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 200 Florida statutes, providing for conflicts and severability and providing for an effective date. This resolution includes a general fund millage of 7.8695, the voter-approved millage rate for the environmentally sensitive lands operating budget at 0.1250, the voter-approved environmentally sensitive lands debt service millage at 0.0855, and the general obligation bonds millage for the judicial center at 0.1000. The total millage rate for FY '26 is 8.1800 mils, which is 0.0543 mils lower than FY '25's millage of 8.2343.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Resolution Number 2025-73, adopting the tentative millage rates for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2026.
A motion by Commissioner Hanson? Is there a second?
Second.
Scaring me?
Scaring me.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Pennington. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Need to go for public comment on this motion? At this time, I'll open the floor for public comment.
Marvin Clegg, Southwest Flagler, again. I'd like to suggest that you all drop your millage. You see what's going on around the country. You see what's going on with the Doge groups and so forth and so on. We shouldn't have needed Doge to come in and tell us locally what we need to do, but that's what they're doing. Obviously, the sentiment of the country is that we need to tighten up. You know, we thought when Palm Coast Incorporated years ago, oh, boy, the county's going to finally drop its taxes some because now Palm Coast is going to be taxing its residents for a higher level of care. I live on a dirt road that floods, where people can't even get to my house. The road's closed. It's the only access ingress-segress to the houses that are in that area in Southwest Flagler. The only ingress-segress. That's pretty serious. So, for $7,400 or so that I pay in taxes for my house and the property it sits on out in rural Flagler County, what am I getting? Well, I'd say the best thing I'm getting from my buck is probably the school millages. But the police, the fire, that's kind of a... Probably a mutual aid with Volusia County where we are. The response times are not going to be the greatest, but that's okay. We knew that before we built there. But, please, let's... I mean, we're talking about throwing millions into beach renourishment. And I grew up spending summers in Flagler Beach, but can any of you tell me that what we're doing is going to work? I moved away from the inner coastal waterway years ago because we got tired of the taxes and because we flooded in a house on Lambert Avenue that my aunt swore to me would never go underwater. We're in a clearly different weather pattern here. And beach renourishment? No one spoke tonight. Everybody just assumed this is something we got to do. I question that. And I think future county commissions, as Commissioner Pennington suggested, are going to also question that. All it's going to take is one more big piece of weather research to tell us what we're doing is urinating in the wind. So, this is where we're spending money when we've got people living on dirt roads that can't even get to their houses. And this is not a dirt road that we've put in for my... This is a dirt road that goes back to a plat in the early 1900s. So, it's not like I just moved in from New Jersey or something. So, I would ask you all to consider the fact that, for example, our road priority got dumped from number 18 a few years ago when I appeared before this board. We were number 18 to get our road paved. Suddenly, it's number 30. Yes, boards of county commission do change from what previous boards do because now I'm number 30. So, you can't count on what future boards will do. And let's put our money where we can see something tangible and guarantee that something's going to be there a few years from now, which we can't say about the sand.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Any final comments from the board? All right, seeing none, I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Pennington. We'll do a roll call.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pennington?
Aye.
Chair Dance?
Aye.
Commissioner Carney?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, subsequent to the board adopting the FY '26 tentative millage rates is to adopt the corresponding FY '26 tentative budget as amended. Before you is Resolution Number 2025-74, a resolution to adopt the changed revenue estimates and the amended tentative budget for fiscal year ending September 30, 2026, pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 200 Florida statutes, providing for conflicts and severability and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Resolution Number 2025-74, adopting the changed revenue estimates and the amended tentative budget for fiscal year ending September 30, 2026.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Pennington. This time, I'll open it up for public comment. Any public comment on the motion? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Any final comments from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, we'll do a roll call.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pennington?
Aye.
Chair Dance?
Aye.
Commissioner Carney? I'm sorry, the mic didn't pick that up.
Your mic.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, the final action request from the board this evening is establish and publicly announce